Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting. Thank you all for coming and participating. City Attorney, report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items that was discussed is 112 North H Street, which is the theater building, theater property, and the county, I'm sorry, the council has determined that in the first meeting of May, a staff report is going to be brought to bring up the status so the public knows what the status is of the information that the county, I'm sorry, that the city council has been given and to highlight that information so the public knows what's going on. And with regard to the other item, the evaluation has been continued for another two weeks.
Christmas, we'll have it done by Christmas. Okay, and now for this evening, for our invocation, Pastor Bernie Fettman, would you all please rise?
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the value of each person. There are many things you desire for our community, and my prayer is that we also desire them. Through the Prophet Mica, you spoke of what we require of us, that we act justly and love mercy and walk with you in humility. In that humility, I come tonight and ask you to provide wisdom beyond what is known, understanding beyond what we can perceive, and unity of spirit for the common good. Thank you for these servants of ours, our mayor, and our council who have sacrificed much to serve at the best of their ability. Bless and strengthen them for doing so. And thank you not only for them, but the many who serve our community and add value to others, often without any recognition. Help us to live and act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with kindness and mercy. And may the heart of service and kindness continue to grow in our community. Help us to see the value and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence that your creation deserves. God renew us with the strength of your presence. Watch over those who protect and watch over us here, and also stand with those who watch over us all over the world in military service, especially those downrange and in harm's way. We stand here grateful tonight for our freedom, for your goodness and your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, my apology, in the rush of things, with the switch at city staff, we have one proclamation that wasn't listed this evening, but Nicholas Schmidt, you're out there somewhere, I'm sure, because you're on break. Raise your hand, Nick. There you are, okay. We'll be having a proclamation for Nicholas. And so, we'll have some proclamations. We'll start out with Arbor Day, I know, near and dear to your heart. Whereas Arbor Day is a day dedicated to trees and their preservation, and whereas trees provide a quality living environment and enhance the social, cultural, sensory, and economic dimensions of our city, and whereas we must ensure the future of our urban forests for ourselves as well as our children and our children's children. And whereas the city of Lompoc, in partnership with its citizens and the Lompoc Beautification Commission, encourage all residents of the city and the valley to observe Arbor Day by planting a tree on their property or taking advantage of the city's ongoing tree planting program. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 24th, 2012, as Arbor Day in the City of Lompoc, and urge our citizens to plant lots of trees in new places and replace lost trees so that the entire Lompoc Valley will continue to be a valley of distinction and beauty. And you're going to talk about the Arbor Day festivities, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'm much shorter than he is. Our Arbor Day festivities will take place this Saturday at 11 o'clock at Beatty Park. If you haven't been to Beatty Park lately, I encourage you to come. Well, we'll be honoring seven representatives from Lompoc that had all those wonderful qualities that Pastor Bernie talked about in his prayer. We hope to see you there, and happy Arbor Day.
Okay, thank you. Come on over, Dirk. Come on. I'm not going to make you read it, you don't have to hide. Come on, you guys. Come on down. I need the mayor pro tem here, because he's the one that pointed this out to me, so we've got to get. Proclamation commending the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge for their dedication in providing outstanding community service and support. Whereas since 1968, the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge has been a pillar to our African-American community, and is to be commended for their many generous philanthropic contributions, all while upholding their noble commitment to honor their organization's three foundational mainstays of faith, hope, and charity. And whereas the members of the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge are a very dedicated group of individuals that has unselfishly provided continued outstanding community service and support to promote a high quality of life for our citizens, the members continue to be at the forefront of issues paramount to our community, and have been instrumental in laying and dedicating cornerstones to most of the ground-laying activities of new government buildings, holding weekly barbecues to raise funds for our local nonprofit organizations and churches, and sponsoring queen candidates throughout the city's Flower Festival history. And whereas the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge has provided funding for college scholarships to high school seniors who might otherwise have not been able to have the opportunity to attend college by taking initiative to hold their innovative black and white fundraising balls. And whereas for the past two Christmas seasons, the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge has altruistically adopted a Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County Head Start student for whom they generously provide a charitable gift in order to make the difference in a disadvantaged child's life. And whereas our community has greatly benefited from the underlying charitable work and contributions that the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge has generously provided throughout their history, to make the city of Lompoc a more exceptional place to live, while also supporting our citizens to attain a higher quality of life. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby call upon all citizens to join me in recognizing and commending the members of the Prince Hall Masonic Lodge for their many generous philanthropic contributions and continued commitment to support our community.
Mary Lynn, the Lompoc City Council, my name is Art Hill. I am a past master of the Lompoc Masonic Lodge 109, and we are grateful, appreciative of this recognition as being given by the Lompoc City Council. And to Councilman Dirk, I've been knowing him for quite a while, and he's quite supportive of all our efforts. I'd like to call your attention to one thing. It says Negro or Black. We are no longer in that environment. We give to the whole community. And it doesn't matter what ethnicity or what you belong to, Mosaid Lodge 109 will assist you in scholarship, community action, counseling, and whatever else the Masonic family provides. So we are deeply honored to be recognized by our city of Lompoc for this achievement. Thank you very much.
Nicholas, Mom, all you disc golfers, come on down. Disc golfers in the back row, I see you out there. Come on, let's go. Come on, get up over here. Mom, you're not hiding out on this. No, you're not going in the back row. No, 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 you're up here in the front row. Disc golfers in the rear. That's it. A proclamation honoring Nicholas Schmidt for creating the Beatty Park Public Disc Golf Facility. Whereas, an enterprising local citizen, Nicholas Schmidt, is to be commended for his ambition and initiative in planning and building the entire Disc Golf Course project by seeking and securing funding and donations, gathering and coordinating material and human resources, and collaborating with many local citizens and businesses to make an individual contribution of creating a public recreation facility for the city and the citizens of Lompoc. And whereas Nicholas Schmidt has provided an incredible recreational opportunity, tough tongue day, opportunity, to the citizens of the city of Lompoc, which helps to increase their quality of life while also assisting the city of Lompoc in increasing community involvement and recreational opportunities. And whereas the knowledge that Nicholas Schmidt has of the game of Disc Golf through his research and experience, coupled with his current educational experience, has proven to be essential to the successful creation and completion from the proposed to implement the entire Disc Golf Course at Beatty Park. And whereas the plan Nicholas Schmidt created using the sprawling 50 acres of open space at Beatty Park is ideal for the current nine-hole course and the future expansion to an 18-hole Disc Golf Course, and provides for a perfect setting for the community for this activity. It has also ultimately provided a solution to a 20-year wish list item from the City of Lompoc Parks and Recreation Department, and we would like to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for his contribution and taking the initiative for the future of our community. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the creation of the Disc Golf Course recreational facility resulting from the aspirations and the cumulative hard work, dedication, and ingenious collaboration of Nick.
First, I'd like to thank Parks and Recs for approving the project, and the council and mayor for also approving the project, and everybody who voted for us to get our grant and came out to help build, and everybody who comes out to play, and hopefully everybody who will come out to play. Thank you.
And then I think the other thing I'd like to acknowledge is all the rest of these folks back here, because it's really great when someone like Nick comes up with an idea, plans it, builds it, and hands it to you, and says, "Okay, go have fun." But it's even better when a bunch of people come together and form a committee and start raising money to build more, because it's so successful that Dirk can't even get on the course anymore, and he lives right next door. You know, his tee time was seven hours later the other day. So, I think you're the chairman, right? Maybe you'd like to say a word about it, and particularly about the 25th. Absolutely.
Evening, everybody. My name is Brent Hamner. I'm the chairman of the new Disc Golf Committee. We are now official members of the Parks and Recs and Pools Foundation of our 10 members. We have about 80 members in our club right now, and it's growing. And our objective is to get another nine in the back and another 18 at River Park in the future. Our objective is to make this a pro course, meaning we have pro tournaments. You're looking at a two, three-day event, meaning brings revenue into our city. This is a little down the road, but we're looking big. We have an event on the 25th. It's our first tournament. It's a pro-am tournament. Guys from Santa Maria, San Luis, and ourselves will be competing against this. It starts at 10:00. We encourage you guys to come out to see how it works, and enjoy and have fun watching. And our other objective is we're going to try to do, eh, three or four times a year to do clinics, meaning if you're really interested and want to do it, come on down. We'll show you how to play. We'll give you the rules, give you tips how to throw the disc. There's families coming out every day. On weekends, there's 30, 40 people at one time on the course. It's awesome. So I encourage you guys, come out and check it out, if you haven't seen it already. Vice President? This is my vice chairman, Skip. You want to say it?
No.
I'm not a public speaker, but anyways, I hope you guys can support us. I'm in good terms with the park ranger, the park host, and everybody, so if there's any problems, they call me, and we'll try to resolve it without having to go here. You know, so anyways, thank you very much.
Oh, but we don't have a website, it's just Facebook. I'm sorry, Facebook.
No, if anyone's interested, we do have a Facebook page. If you guys, it's Rocket, what is it, Skip? Rocket City Chainbangers.
Disc Golf Club.
Disc Golf Club. And we have about 80 members on there right now, so it's growing. Thank you.
Okay, now the city administrators report.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, audience, and viewers, I have a couple of business items tonight. First, the city administrator's status report includes two monthly project updates related to the Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center and the installation of a traffic signal and curb ramps at the intersection of Ocean Avenue and R Street. Senior Civil Engineer Mike Luther is available tonight to present these projects, and I invite him to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable counsel. I'd like to start out with giving an update on the traffic signal installation project. The city, the design engineer received comments back from Caltrans, and they are currently revising the plans, and they are anticipating having the final revised plans back to the city by the end of this week. After that, the next step will be to submit those plans along with an encroachment application to Caltrans for approval, and that typically takes four to eight weeks, but we're anticipating a quicker turnaround since Caltrans has already reviewed this project once. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this project.
Any questions, my counsel? Go ahead.
Okay, let's move on to the Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center. As you know, the project is currently behind contract timeline. It's, as of today, it's 39 days beyond the contract time, but we are getting closer to the end, and it is anticipated that by the first week in April, recreation staff can begin moving into the facility, setting up their offices and such, and hopefully shortly after that, we'll actually be able to take occupancy. The current things they're working on right now is they're, we're hooking up data and communication lines, they're installing the projectors, finalizing the installation of kitchen equipment. They still have to install handrails in the hallways, and there'll be plenty of punch list items once we actually get to that point. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have regarding that project.
Is there any possibility we could give them a punch list earlier, so they could start in on sooner? Is that not the way it's done?
Well, we give them informal punch lists, but at this point, there really isn't, it's not complete enough to actually do a formal punch list, but yeah, we do point out as we see items, so that they can work on them.
Proactive, good things.
Yeah.
And are they done with paint and flooring now, and ceilings? Are they beyond that?
Everything's painted, and the floors are all in. It's pretty complete, it's just a matter of, you know, finishing touches, you know.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Usually in these reports, the contractor provides an outline of the construction activities. I didn't receive that in the staff report.
Yeah, I didn't actually receive that in time. It's actually our construction manager that prepares that, so I didn't have a report to attach to this month's report.
So can that be disseminated, counsel, or attached to the next report, please?
Yeah, he's going to do an update for the next month, which will cover two months' worth of work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, I have three items I need to take care of at the beginning of the meeting, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, you've got one more. Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, audience, and viewers, while many are aware, I would take this opportunity to publicly announce that Lompoc Police Chief Tim Dabney submitted his intent to retire from the city of Lompoc effective August 14th, 2012. Chief Dabney has served 30 years in law enforcement, 16 years serving the city of Lompoc. Best described as a servant leader, Chief Dabney leads with high values of commitment, compassion, and integrity, serving the men and women of the Lompoc Police Department whom he is most proud of, his community, the residents of Lompoc, the mayor, and city council members, administration, and his city colleagues. Chief Dabney's targeted retirement date of August 14th allows a five-month transition period, which ensures a smooth transition. In the meantime, Chief Dabney remains committed to much work still to be done. Chief Dabney's strong emphasis on community policing programs includes working with the faith-based volunteers to clean up the city through coordinating citywide cleanup days, and wanting to give Lompoc residents an understanding of the police department's day-to-day operations, Chief Dabney developed a free 13-week citizen law enforcement education program, the Lompoc Police Citizens Academy. He is scheduled to begin Class 23 this week. While five months remain prior to his retirement date, we sincerely extend our best to Chief Dabney and his wife Susan, as they ask God's blessings and direction on their future retirement plans. Chief, we commend you for honorably serving the city as our police chief, and I would ask you to stand up so we can acknowledge you for your service.
You know, I have to share two things. The chief picked a retirement date, but he was driven by two things. Number one, he wanted to stand at the corner of H and Ocean for the 34th year? 16th for me. For the Lompoc Flower Festival Parade, and also be here to help with the police Special Olympics car show, so he's going to go out doing good work. Thank you, chief. Anything else, city administrator? Okay. I have a couple of things I need to cover at the beginning of the meeting while everybody's still here. First items nine and 11 are removed from the agenda since we have a rather full one tonight, and I didn't want to take up the Economic Development Commission report. At the very end, it will be at the beginning of next, two weeks from now, is council meeting. And then, next, councilmember Martin.
You're making the request to take out the Economic Development Committee's strategic plan updates?
Yes. They have been told that we would not be hearing it tonight because we had a larger agenda, and it would be at the end of the agenda.
Well, that's not my understanding. I mean, my commissioner told me about, that this was going on tonight, so I don't know when the disconnect occurred, but as far as I know, my commissioner wasn't informed that it wasn't going to be happening tonight. Are there members of the public here that are here for this purpose? No?
No.
Yes?
Also, as you know, the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency was dissolved as of February 1st, 2012, pursuant to ABX 126. The legislature has also established a process of winding down each of the former agency's finances. I'm sorry?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but my understanding is that to pull an agenda item out, you need to have three votes, so I don't know if you're going to call for the votes, or you're just assuming that you have them. Excuse me.
I was not under the impression I needed three votes. Do I need three votes for that?
If I may, through the mayor, if there's three councilmembers who don't want it pulled, then I would suggest that a motion be made to not have it pulled, but the person who's running the meeting, who's the mayor, does have the ability to adjust the agenda. However, if there's a desire for the council to not have it taken off the agenda, that's certainly something that the council can do.
Okay. Backing up, are there three persons who would not like to pull items nine or 11?
Mary Lynn?
Mm-hmm.
Is the representative from EEG present this evening in regards to agenda item nine?
No, they were not. The timeframe in which we notified them that this was coming up was not adequate for them to put together their people to come to the meeting, which is why that item was not up.
And Ms. Gallivan, can you address the communication with the Economic Development Committee in regards to this evening?
Yes, this afternoon, I was made aware that we would be able to put this at the top of the next council meeting, so that it wouldn't be, you know, at midnight this evening, and I notified the committee members this afternoon as soon as I knew that was going to be brought up.
Thank you.
So all members of all of the committee were informed, and therefore they didn't come tonight, is that correct? They were told not to come tonight?
I sent an email this afternoon to all the committee members and let them know that the intent was, it was going to be continued to a future agenda item, and that if they could come in support of the resolution for the winery resolution, to still come.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, I guess if the members of the committee have been notified that this is not going to be on the agenda, it doesn't make sense to have it on the agenda, but I find it rather unusual to pull an agenda item like that without really properly notifying everybody involved.
So let's start over. Ready? As you know, the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency was dissolved as of February 1st, 2012. Pursuant to ABX 126, that legislation also established a process for winding down each of the former agency's finances. One of the steps in the process is the creation of the Oversight Board for each of the former redevelopment agencies. Each of those boards is charged with reviewing the obligations of the agency to which it relates and determining whether those obligations are enforceable. Each of those boards are comprised of seven members. Two of the members of each board are to be appointed by the mayor of the city in which the former redevelopment agency operated. One selection is at large, and so for the purposes of my appointments, I'm appointing Laurel Barcelonier, our city administrator, to fill one position. The other selection is to be made from employees of the agency represented by the bargaining unit. However, in the Lompoc Agency, the Lompoc Agency did not have employees, and none of the city employees who regularly provided service to the agency are represented by a bargaining unit. Because of that, my selection for that position is Brad Wilkie, our Management Services Director, since he and all of the other city staff who provided services to the city were part of the non-represented group of city employees, and I would add, he's the most knowledgeable of the finances of the agency. The other five positions on the Oversight Board are appointed as follows. Two by the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors, and one each by the Chancellor of the California Community College, the County Superintendent of Instruction, and the largest district by property tax share, which in, which in Lompoc, is the Lompoc Healthcare District. The city is responsible for providing staffing for the Oversight Board. With my appointment, the board positions are now filled, and the first meeting of the board will be scheduled for sometime in early April. Pursuant to AB 26X1, the board will have to review the approval, approve, review and approve the first schedule of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency obligations by April 15th, and that is the schedule that this council approved several meetings ago. The next one is, you may have read in the paper, that there were some charges of conflict of interest with regard to agencies and cities within, principally within Orange County, but in other areas within the state. And the question with regard to the conflict of interest came about because, as a group, we appoint someone to another board or commission. Several of these boards or permissions, commissions pay what generally called a stipend or a small amount to cover the cost of going to their meetings. In our case, I believe we have two. So initially, the FPPC, the Fair Political Practice Commission, said that no, that was a violation, and that someone who was being appointed to one of those boards couldn't vote on it, and issued some letters to other agencies. I raised this with our city attorney, and we were in the midst of trying to figure out if we needed to undo the meetings and have a vote, when the FPPC issued a new rule that basically said, no, we've changed our mind, you can go ahead and vote for yourself on something where there's a stipend involved if your compensation is no different from anyone else. And I know you don't want me to read all this, but if anybody's really interested, it's 18705 dot five of the state code, where you can see me for a copy. And then the final issue is, excuse me. There've been a lot of newspaper articles recently with regard to smart meters, and people have asked, well, those meters you put on in Lompoc are those, those smart meters? And the answer to that is no. Ours are just a little smart. Smart meters communicate back and forth with appliances, and then with the central station of the electric company, and do whatever it is smart meters do. Our meters are a little smarter, which means we don't have to go out and read them. A radio signal is sent to the meter once a month, and it responds by telling how much electricity your residence or business had used in the course of the month. So the amount of RF generated by the meter is very small, and so anyway, it's not much of an issue. That's the good news. And that's all I have. Appreciate your patience on those three subjects. And now, we'll move to oral communications. This is your opportunity to come and speak to us on any subject that is not on the agenda, or if there's an item on the agenda that you're unable to stay for, feel free to talk to us now. Please state your name.
I live in Lompoc. First of all, I'd like to commend the young gentleman who took on Disc Golf. That's just wonderful, that young people take an interest in the community and come forth and do such wonderful things. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I did watch it on television, and it deals with the zoning. I appreciate the fact that the council's trying to make things easier for people to improve their property. I have a couple of concerns relative to Old Town. In the anxiety to get things done, I'm concerned that too many changes are being proposed. Specific Plan has good ideas. It was costly, and I know that nothing has really happened with a specific plan. I don't think we should throw the baby out with a wash. There are many good ideas there, and certainly would be an excellent guide, and we certainly put a lot of input into that, and certainly a lot of city money. So that's one thing. Allowing the changes to be made inside of a building, as long as no exterior changes are made, does not provide an incentive to improve the exterior facade of the building. I think that as buildings are improved, the outside should be improved. That's what we're trying to do, is to make our city look a little brighter. As one individual, I feel that Old Town should be unique. Allowing virtually any type of business to come into Old Town will not prove to be the unique Old Town, Old Town area which we envisioned. I think that when people come into the city, they should definitely see the distinction between Lompoc and Old Town. We want it to be unique, and I'm sure all of you, as I have, seen Old Towns in other cities, and it's very unique and different, and we don't want to have big box store, whatever, come into Old Town. So I hope, I know this is coming up at the next, I believe, the next meeting, and I hope that you will look at this carefully, so that all the time investment that we have spent in Old Town does not go astray. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Ostini, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you again for allowing me to speak. Since I saw you last month, a lot of things have been going on. Right after our last, last meeting, I met with Teresa Gallivan, and her and I have talked about the strategic plan, and looked at some guidelines on that. So next month, I'll be bringing that to you. I suggest if you have any thoughts or comments about that, please get them to her or to me, so we can make sure we incorporate, you know, the wishes of the council in that plan. Some other things I've been involved in, have I spoken to you about the Stand Down out of Santa Maria? Anybody familiar with that? Pardon me? Right. Supervisor Levin, you know Santa Maria is organizing a Stand Down. It's an event to help support homeless veterans, and this has been going on since December. Representatives from all over the county, it's for all of Santa Barbara County, not just Santa Maria. So I've been attending those meetings, been actively participating in helping gather resources for that event. It'll be held in October, so it's really, really being worked very well, and I think it's gonna be a great event when it's done. We've gotten a lot of guidance from San Diego, who's been doing this for 14 years. But it's an exciting event and a good opportunity to help support our homeless veterans, and there's been a lot of support come out of Lompoc so far for that event. But it's a ways off yet, but you gotta plan, because there's a lot of work that goes into this. Couple items, this last month, I spoke to the Youth Commission on Leadership, the commission that you guys, of course, appoint. That was kind of a neat opportunity to see some of our young folks who are gonna be the future, people sitting in those chairs hopefully someday. So that was exciting. I had a ribbon cutting. I think some of you were able to make the ribbon cutting at West Side Pizza. I know John, Mary Lynn was there. And that's exciting to see new businesses opening, so that was good. Again, participated in the economic development meetings. Two four-hour sessions, very, very intense process, but a good process, and I know many of you came and, and watched part of that process along the way, so. Sorry, it's not gonna be tonight, but I think you'll be excited about what you hear when that's presented. I had another tourism committee meeting this, two weeks ago. I had a lady from Sanes Valley, Mary Harris of the Sanes Valley Hotel Association, come speak about business improvement districts. Anybody familiar with that? T-bids, they call them in many cases, where a group of businesses come together, basically assess themselves to generate a pile of money to go out and promote those businesses. It's something we're in the very early stages of talking about right now in Lompoc, but we'll have to come back to the council. The council does have to agree to allow that to happen. But again, we're in the early stages. The hotel owners in town, at least the majority of them, are very excited about this, this prospect, so I'm excited about it. The chamber's going through, some of you may have seen, going through a website redesign. Our website's old and kind of antiquated. I spoke with Teresa a little bit about that, about tying that in with the city's website, so they're very easily linked together. We're going through a rebranding. Our logo's an old logo. We have a contest going on right now for a new logo on the, on the 6th of April is the final day for submissions. We've already got about a dozen submissions for that, but I'm anticipating quite a few more of those will come in before then, but that's kind of the start of our website redesign is, is, you know, establishing a new, a new logo. Again, I mentioned to you before about the Central Coast Tourism Council that I've attended over in Solvang. I was, participated in a teleconference last Friday with that organization, and there's just a lot of good stuff going on in the tourism world with that. I've had some connections with some groups out of the United Kingdom, as well as Ireland. I've sent them information. Also, they'll be taking some information about the Lompoc Valley, down to what's called a powwow, where all these tourist leaders come into a, to a conference. It'll be held in LA this year, and they're gonna be taking some information about Lompoc down there with them. Along with that, on this Friday, there's a group from France of tour leaders coming through Lompoc, gonna spend an hour here in Lompoc. I'm gonna take them around town, show them a little bit, real quick. Again, an hour's not very long, but give them an opportunity for them to look around Lompoc, ask questions, and hopefully, we can attract some of their business. Some of our hotels have a lot of, a lot of experience working with these tour groups, but this Central Coast Tourism Council's been a real, a real jewel for me to find and get involved in, so I'm excited about that. I also had a meeting with some folks from KCOY-TV about a Shop Lompoc program. Have any of you seen the Shop Santa Maria program that's usually held over the holidays? I've talked to them about doing something like that in Lompoc. They actually gave me a package back, very reasonably priced. I was very surprised at the cost, so I'm gonna try and work with them and see if it's something we can afford to get some things on TV about Shop Lompoc, and I'm excited about that. Tomorrow, we'll be going to Santa Maria to a small business outreach program. The base will be involved in that, and small businesses will be represented at that. It'll be a big operation at the Fair Park. Let's see. Someone, Alice mentioned the wine resolution. I also want to put my support to that. I think it's something that, that is good, and that we need to make sure that our folks are represented in that process. So I'm gonna put my support to that. Another exciting thing coming up on Saturday, the 24th, 10 o'clock, our next cash mob in Lompoc. We'll be meeting in the parking lot right next to the chamber. I can't tell you where we're going, because it's top secret. Only me and one other person know, I think, and I'm not telling. So 10 o'clock Saturday, in the parking lot at the chamber, have your $10 in hand, and we'll tell you where we're going, and we'll go spend some money in Lompoc. And last but not least, my congratulations to Chief Dabney. He's been a great guy, a great guy to work with. I've known him ever since he's been here, and it's been a real pleasure. Anytime I need something, he's always been there to help and support, so. Questions?
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your reports, Mr. Ostini. I think you should take some credit on behalf of the chamber for another event that's coming up this Sunday, Locals Day. So the chamber actually played, helped us play a role in communicating with Vandenberg Air Force Base in trying to get some folks in, and they also sort of rerouted some of the monies that the wineries helped, helped raise to sponsor that event as well.
Well, a big part of that came from the events at the Old Town Market, the winery events, so some of the profits from that are going to help support this event, and as far as connecting the base, that was a huge part with my board, that we connect with the base, and that was probably one of the reasons why they hired me, is my connection to the base. So we've made a real effort to cross-market with them and get the word out in the base, and I think it's, it's drawn dividends for us.
Right, so again, it's this Sunday. If you want to announce the information?
Yeah, this Sunday, from 12 to 4. Come to the ghetto, $30 for local, $40 for non-local, and local also includes Vandenberg Air Force Base. So yeah, I think it's gonna be great. For $30, you can drink out wine at every winery for four hours, so it's, it's a deal. It's a deal. I live close enough, I can walk home, or at least stagger or crawl, or something like that, so.
Yeah, there's all 18 tasting rooms, there'll be a souvenir glass, and 10% of proceeds are going to Lompoc District Library and Foundation, so thank you for the chamber for supporting that.
Our pleasure. It's a great event.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ostini, for your report. Speaking of the Old Town Market, are you soliciting for volunteers?
Yeah, actually, actually, I thought I was, I had it on my list. I obviously didn't say anything. We actually had our first meeting last week, probably had 15, 20 people show up to that meeting. I couldn't stay the whole time for that. John Keth from the Party Shop is the committee chair for that. But yes, if you know people that are interested, please just call us, and we'll get that information to John. But yeah, we're, we're starting those wheels turning.
Yes, I figured the sooner the better, that we get it out there and try to promote it. Thank you.
Exactly, exactly.
And the exciting date for the first one is?
I'm sorry?
The exciting date for the first Old Town Market is?
Well, it's gonna be interesting, because we're still kind of negotiating that, because the POPS is trying to do an event actually on the 4th. So they're trying to get us to team with them and do it on the 4th, rather than do it on the 6th, so the 4th is a Wednesday. So we're still kind of up in the air on that one, so that hasn't been decided. It's either the 4th or the 6th, one of the two. And we will have the Farmer's Market over there on Cypress, starting that first week. We're not gonna mess around and wait half the summer to get them over there, but I think the two of them tie well together.
Would you say that your experience in the Economic Development Committee perhaps gave you some information to take back to the chamber with regard to the strategic plan, so you get a little interlock?
Well, well, I can't say really, because the strategic plan that the chamber has, by my board of the chamber, has been done for months, and you folks all have copies of that. So, but as far as what the council's maybe looking for, yes, I would agree with that, so. And that's why I ask for, for any input from the council, that to help with that is, is appreciated.
And the last thing?
Separate documents.
You were talking about T-Bid, and are you familiar with the one in Pismo Beach?
A little bit, but I'm familiar. The lady that came from, from Sanes Valley Hotel Association, she's actually in charge of that, and they give, gave their money to one organization, and she actually runs that. But I, that's where I forgot the idea initially, at the, at the Central Coast Tourism Council Conference in Solvang, I sat next to a lady from Pismo Beach who was talking about that process, and I'd never even heard of it before. But right now, our hotels, at least a good percentage of them, need more than 50%, are very, very excited about that process, so.
My understanding from somebody that bent my ear for about an hour on the subject was that it's been tremendously successful for Pismo, and it's done well for the Valley, too.
Oh, yeah, the Valley speaks very highly of it, definitely. And theirs is much harder to put together than it would be for Lompoc, because they reach outside of just Solvang. You have the community of Bilton, you have the outlying communities, Los Olivos, Los Alamos, that are all part of theirs, so they're more than just, you know, and Lompoc is easy. We're within the city limits, it's a pretty easy thing to try and do, but you'll be hearing more. We've contacted a consultant, and we'll be putting that together. Hopefully, next we'll be coming to meet with the hotel owners, and we'll be ready to come, come together and start that process rolling.
Great.
If they all agree, so.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. First, I would like to just share with you, I agree with everything Ms. Milligan said. I hadn't really planned on speaking about that tonight, but since she said it, I would like to concur that I do hope there is some special consideration in the general plan in zoning for Old Town. I agree with her completely, and I, and it makes me think, looking at the five of you here at the last meeting, Assembly Member, Assembly Member, I'm sorry, councilmember, I don't know why I did that. Councilmember Costa was attempting to explain the difference between downtown Sacramento and Old Town, and although I don't know that you got to fully complete your point, because there was someone in the audience speaking over you, but she's absolutely correct. I lived in Sacramento 30 years, and Old Sacramento is very distinct from downtown Sacramento, and Old Sacramento does in fact have special requirements, and it's been wildly successful. I also just, you know, I came to this meeting to follow, perhaps speak about, but certainly listen to three items. Two of them have now been pulled. To me, that's a little disturbing. It surprises me that there was no public notice, and I happened to print my agenda out in the pieces, I was printing them at 5:30. There was no notice that those items had been pulled. I'm aware that mayors sometimes adjust the schedule. If there's a group of people in the audience that want to speak on an event, a mayor's have in the past moved it up, so it occurs earlier rather than later. Completely pulling items off the agenda isn't that, I hope, not that commonly done. I believe this council wants to encourage public participation. Pulling items off the agenda when the public has no way of knowing you're going to do it is not what I would call an encouragement to participate in your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Seeing no Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the consent calendar. This evening on the consent calendar, we have the approval of the minutes. We have approval of expenditures for $1 million, payroll of $1,022,000, expense vouchers of $1,031,000, expense vouchers of $456,000, electronic payments of $3,157. Final acceptance of Project FY11-S-3, the slurry seal. The award of Project FY09W1, the waterline and valve replacement. The acceptance of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency financial statements from fiscal year June 30th, 2011. And that is it. Item 5, the acceptance of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency financial statements is the carry-on item from last council meeting, yes? Yes? Okay, I'd like to pull that item, because there were discussion items with regard to that, and I want to see that we resolve those. Are there any other items that council member would like to have pulled at this time?
Five.
Five?
For discussion?
Yes. I want to be sure we got what we went for. Seeing no lights, I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And now we have appointments. is the Airport Commission. First appointment is one non-voting term ending in 1 of 2016. This is for someone who does not live within the city limits, and this was what the council added these positions, and the applicant is Robert Wykoff. And I would accept a motion to nominate Mr. Wykoff.
I'd like to nominate Robert Wykoff.
And a second.
A second.
Bob, I think you're sitting out there. Do you want to say anything? I'm going by the order on the agenda, and the order's different.
I appreciate the nomination. I've spent about 30 years tending to the airport in one way or another. Dwayne Holmdahl, when he was on the Board of Supervisors, appointed me to the County Airport Committee when the airport belonged to the county. During my tenure there, it became apparent that the county was not going to maintain the airport. It was gonna let it slide and close it. So in 1989, I made the motion at the County Airport Committee that the county give the airport to the city. It finally happened in summer of 1991. I was the first chairman of the Lompoc Airport Commission before the rules changed, but we have been flying out of the Lompoc Airport since 1982. We have been tenants on the airport during that time, including having built a hangar there. So the Lompoc Airport, though I live in the village, is very near and dear to our hearts, and we have been working in the support of the airport for a long time, and I would appreciate the appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for all you've done. Any discussion from the council? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we have a position on the senior commission for Robert Kennedy. Robert, are you out there? No, okay. Speaking on Robert's behalf, I served with him on the County Human Services Commission, and he was a dedicated commissioner who was always on top of it and did a great job and was very helpful in teaching me that. I relied on him heavily, and I would accept a motion to nominate Robert.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And the last one is my nominee for the Human Services Commission, Dr. Nikki Sandoval, who has, wow, tons of experience. I'm so happy that she accepted my offer, so I would like to nominate her personally, and I would accept a second.
A second.
Thank you. I didn't see Nikki. Nikki, are you out there? She was here the other night for something else. Is there any discussion from the council? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Okay. Moving on to item 7, a public hearing, a request submitted by the applicant Caleb Rup of Pacific West Communities, Inc., to revise the approved phasing of the site plan for the Cypress Court project. The project is located at 1420 East Ocean Avenue, Assessor's Parcel 8515017 and 18, and Planning Division CUP 8-05 LOM 586-P. Lucille.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. As you recall, the council in January heard a request by Pacific West Communities to have a two-phase project at the corner of Ocean and 7th in the Cypress Court development. The council discussed the issue and agreed to allow a two-phase project that consisted of the residential project and the smaller 2,500-square-foot building at the corner of Ocean and 7th as Phase 1, with all of the improvements included. Phase 2 would then be the 12,000-square-foot commercial building in the center of the site. The applicant was proceeding with that approval that was granted by the council, and as the project completed and we received correspondence from the applicant on March 1st that was forwarded to the council requesting that the phasing be reconsidered. There was difficulty, and they were unable to meet the conditions that were agreed to with the council. The difficulty came from an easement for parking and signage across the smaller site at Ocean and 7th, which made it not possible for them to construct the building that they had agreed to construct. So they are before the council and have requested that building be removed as part of the project description. They are requesting the construction instead of the 12,000-square-foot building, which is a professional office building and is in the center of the site. They are also looking, because the conditions of approval that were put on by the council during the meeting of January 17th require them to meet certain conditions, they are requesting that those conditions be amended or taken off. Deletion of the conditions of approval would, from the Resolution 5654, Prince 10, which was the original approval, and those require the reciprocal access agreement and an additional loading zone, which they would be unable to meet, since they are unable to construct the 2,500-square-foot building. They are also requesting that there be an amendment to conditions of approval, P5 and P6, which is in Resolution 5763, and that was the resolution that the council adopted in January. That resolution addresses project phasing and requires that the 2,500-square-foot building be constructed. The applicant is also requesting the elimination of a requirement for quick claim easements that are shown on the approved vesting tentative map. They are not in possession of the property, not in control of the property easements, so they are unable to release those. The project has, included with the staff report, you will see the resolutions that have been adopted by the council in the various approvals. The one that was in 2010, originally approving the modified project for 60 residential units with the two commercial buildings and landscaping and public improvements. And then resolution that was adopted, actually February 7th, the hearing was in January, and that was allowing the phasing that was originally requested to a two-phase project. The letter, also the correspondence from Pacific West Communities, was presented to the council. Additionally, we did receive supplemental information, correspondence that was dated March 19th from Dr. Harris, and that information was provided to the council and has been placed on the website, and so it's available for the public review. The options are outlined in the council report, and we are requesting actions to be taken by the council. To, if the council chooses to grant the request, there would be a number of steps that would need to be taken, which one to the first is to approve the deletion of Building 1, which is the 2,500-square-foot building, and this then makes the project a one-phase project. The 12,000-square-foot commercial building would be part of the Phase 1. It would have to be constructed as a shell prior to occupancy of the residential building. The conditions of approval, as I noted, for the reciprocal access agreement and the additional loading zone would need to be deleted. The conditions regarding the phasing would be amended as they are proposed, and staff is requesting that the council direct staff to enter into an agreement issuing a conditional building permit. This would allow the applicant to proceed with the financing based upon an agreement signed by the applicant with an indemnification to the city and to release any liability that could result from issuance of the conditional building permit. The reason they need a conditional building permit is due to the timelines for their funding. They must get the building permit issued by the city, and that permit is then packaged, presented in Sacramento with their application in order for their financing to be released. The agreement would be reviewed by the city attorney and signed by both the city and the applicant. And if that is, if the council, those steps would need to be taken, the council would want to proceed in the action this evening of allowing the change to the project. Additionally, the council could return the request to the planning commission for a review of the requested change to the approved site plan and conditions of approval, or deny the request or provide alternative direction to staff. And that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I asked the city attorney to develop a little synopsis for us of what is and is not being considered this evening with regard to the law on this. You could kind of talk to those issues.
Yes, through the mayor. The issue before you tonight is limited, if you will. It's limited to the aspect that what you're looking at is whether or not to approve a redesigned site plan, but it's not to analyze whether the housing that was previously approved is still something you would approve in the densities that it's been approved at, in the parking requirements that have been approved for that. It's, if you think of it this way, there was a 2,500-square-foot building that was gonna be on the corner of 7th and Ocean, and your condition was that building had to be built before they got a COO for the residential portion. What they're requesting now is, rather than that building be built at that corner, that they embellish that corner with some aesthetic improvements, landscaping, and maybe some parking, and instead of the 2,500-square-foot building, the 12,000-square-foot building be built to the same standard as the 2,500-square-foot building, meaning it doesn't have to be complete, but at least the shell is done, again, before the certificate of occupancy could be issued for any use of the residential building. So it's important, I think, for the council to recognize that although you have the entire site plan before you, you don't really need to spend time on reanalyzing the impacts and the benefits or detriments from the residential or from the 12,000-square-foot building. It's really whether or not you want to allow the plan to be changed so that the 2,500-square-foot building is no longer on it, some embellishment to that corner, and the 12,000-square-foot building built before the certificate of occupancy to the residential.
Any questions for the city attorney at this time? Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for having me. My name's Caleb Rup, and I'm the president and owner of Pacific West. That's organizations that is in partnership with the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority and representative. John Palansky and Fred Lamont are here in the audience tonight, if you have any questions for them. But I know you got a full agenda, so I just want to move pretty quickly through this. The site you're familiar with, at the corner of Ocean there, I'm not gonna go through these details, but this is really just the project as you've seen it before. 60 units, all of this is remaining. The main difference is this issue of the commercial buildings. We find ourselves in a situation where we're fully financed and basically ready to proceed but for this issue. This is just a kind of an overview of the site as it is approved currently, and then this gives you just a close-up of the site as approved. I draw attention to the upper right-hand corner of the slide just to see the vet clinic and Dr. Harris's property there, which will be the subject of the next couple of things I want to talk about. And then there's an elevation to give you kind of an orientation for those of you that wanted it. So the basic fundamental problem, Lucille kind of went through all the different nuances of the request, but the basic fundamental problem is this, is that when we're working to finalize the development conditions and working to get things signed, we started working with Dr. Harris on the property that this easement is affected by, and what came to light in basically late January was that there was an easement on our property that really had substantial benefit to his parcel, and that was not of record prior that we could find on any of our title reports. And so essentially, that easement was very inequitable for him. He was basically taking his property and transferring his rights to develop that property into basically a parking lot. So, you know, naturally, from his perspective, it was really, you know, an unfair business arrangement. Of course, that business arrangement had been constituted several years ago prior to our involvement, but nonetheless, you know, when I got to talking to him, I realized that. And there you can kind of see the three parcels. This is sort of an overview of where his clinic is currently, and then the vacant lot right below it, and then this yellow area is really the parcel that is where this parking easement is affecting. So what we're asking for is a revised project scope, and really, that So what we're asking for is a revised project scope, and really, that's really been covered. Everything else about the project is going to remain, the onsite, offsite improvements, but then a couple of additional things we're going to do is to resurface and improve the easement area, landscape it, and then eliminate any random parking that was there before. And basically, that's a close-up of what it would look like currently as interim improvements, and then we'll do some landscape treatment, put some palm trees on the corner, and make that kind of a nicer entrance than it currently is, since it is our property and part of our project. And we'd also be making some improvements to Dr. Harris's parcel, and you can see them there, some additional parking, a sidewalk going to his current clinic, and then some landscaping improvements. And this just kind of shows you how it would integrate with the overall project plan at this time. The, we're not done, really, with this program, and as much as to say that I've been meeting with Dr. Harris and trying to figure out what exactly could we do together there. And so we have thought of some possibilities, and again, this is not agreed to, and we'd have to go back to Planning Commission for these kinds of things, but, you know, basically, we've come up with a plan that could work, which would involve essentially redevelopment of that corner. It'd involve elimination of the existing clinic there. We could build about 80 to 150 square feet of retail office there, clean up a circulation issue, which I'll get to, and then ultimately, you kind of get a snapshot of what that would look like right there on the corner with parking and everything, and, you know, kind of fix that access area. And then ultimately, you can kind of see the difference between the two, because this is the current proposal. You can kind of see where Building 1 is on the bottom right-hand corner. There's a lot of other space there that's kind of just open and doesn't front on the street, and so what we'd really be proposing to do is kind of work with him to redevelop that corner in such a way to provide a more attractive entrance, and then really kind of maximize the use of that property. With us by ourselves, not working with a doctor, you know, we end up with this, essentially, this leg of parking that really doesn't have any use. That, that parking area there, as it's currently approved, doesn't really benefit our property, and we don't really need it. And so there's an opportunity to work with a doctor to really make this into something that actually works long-term and actually adds more economic value to the overall development plan, as well as more value from, you know, from a real estate perspective and an aesthetics from a corner point of view. So this part of the project here, on the right-hand side, this would definitely head back to Planning Commission for their approval. Dr. Harris and I are going to continue to work together on this aspect of the project and, you know, hopefully come back to the Planning Commission at some point in the future. But this is, you know, this is one concept and one idea, and we're certainly open to others. That's basically the crux of the issue. These are just some of the benefits of the project going forward now. You guys know most of these. We are ready to go. I think it's important to note that, you know, one of the, with, you know, the city currently has, you know, over a million-dollar commitment of redevelopment funds to the project, and of course, if this project goes away, the state will end up taking those funds and using them for their, you know, other purposes. So I don't want to go on to any of the other stuff, just because, you know, you guys got a long agenda, so I'd like to stop there and just leave this time for some questions or anything you want to ask of me.
Council questions at this time? Seems like you're good for the moment. Don't go away. Have a seat.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Harris, you've been mentioned a bunch of times. Would you like to say something? No? You're comfortable? Okay. All right. Is there any discussion before I open this for public comment? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I had a question for staff. On page two, under background and discussion, item two, it says the construction of the 12,000-square-foot professional office building. And then on the next page, page three, under section two, it says 12,000-square-foot commercial building. So I just want to confirm that it is not professional office building, but it will be a commercial building.
In that zone, it could contain either use.
So I have a question for the developer, or, excuse me, for the applicant. What is the intended use for the 12,000-square-foot building?
The, we will construct the shell now, and I think that the next step after we assume the project's going to proceed is we'll start to consider what kind of market conditions are there in terms of what the use would be. But basically, when we build the shell, we'll keep it flexible to allow either uses, and so we would engage professional help for that, real estate brokers probably, to kind of help us figure out what the best use is there.
I think the one struggle that I would have with that is in the Planning Commission's concern, part of that was that you're developing a corner that could be prime commercial location, and if this becomes office building, we no longer have Building 1, then you've lost a lot of potential for commercial building on that site. So I just want to bring that up for council consideration, that that was an issue brought forth by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just need a little point of clarification regarding this easement. This was never found in any title reports before?
Yeah, basically, it actually was discovered when we were, there's a, when the project was bigger project back in the day, there's another piece of property that the original developer lost control of through a bankruptcy, and it was working with those parties that caused us to see what was going on with this easement, because that easement that is affecting what we can't do on the corner there was also, it also impacts another part of the project, which doesn't, you know, affect the development of the project, but it's a right that they have to park on our site. It's been there forever, and it was through that process that really revealed all this, and the title company had fiercely disputed us about this claim, that we thought, okay, this is a legitimate concern. So we started digging, 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 and finally, they accepted the claim that really there is this easement there. And it is, it is of record, but it didn't show up on any of the preliminary reports we had. So that's, basically, all this kind of surfaced in late January.
Did you get your money back from the title company?
Well, you know, so believe me, we asked that question because, but apparently, when they're just issuing preliminary reports, because we don't own the property now, they're not liable until they actually issue that insurance when you buy the property. So unfortunately, which doesn't seem equitable to me, because, you know, you make all these decisions based upon these things, but anyways, it is what it is, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the city administrator or staff. The impact fees of $770,000, now we have, right now, we're waiving some impact fees. Does this take into account that, the amount we're waiving at this current time?
We are currently waiving street impact fees, so those would be the ones that would be in savings or an impact.
So what amount of that $770,000 approximately? Any idea? Okay. Okay, so it's realistic to say that it's really not $770,000 though?
I would just offer that that is the number that we understand that we have to pay to issue the building permits. That does not include school fees. So that's what we, when we applied for our financing, we got a form from the city that said these are all the fees that have to be paid. And so that is the number we have in our budget and we intend to pay. I don't know about this traffic impact fee waiver thing, and if that's something new or if that's been around, but that is what we intend to pay.
Okay, thank you.
Lucille, do you want to speak to that?
When building calculates the impact fees and provides an estimate to the developer, it is taken into consideration the fee that is being waived, so that's not included.
Can I also ask staff to distribute to each council member the parcel map with all the easements that were on it? Because my concern was if they missed one easement, was something else missed by your friendly title company? And I'm wondering if you would speak to the rear driveway easement and verify that you do in fact have that, the one exiting onto Cypress?
Yes, we do have that easement, and that's, that is not a problem. And in fact, you know, the owners that have since purchased that small strip of property there on Cypress, they've, they've been very good to work with, and we actually, you know, but our rights to access that property have not changed, and their rights on our property do not impact the development of our property. If they ultimately come in with a proposal, they have enough room in that parking area because our building's set back far enough from that property to come before the Planning Commission, make a proposal, and it will not have any impact on our buildings or circulation or anything like that. So, but that has been worked out, and we do not have any problems associated with that part of the property.
Ken, your buildings are not sitting on the 20-foot-wide parking easement at the back of the facility?
They are not. They are off of that, yes.
Okay.
Incidentally, the original project that was approved did not regard that easement because they controlled both properties. So they would have assumed to have vacated it, but when that, you know, when we got involved, that was not, that was not part of the scope anymore.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to disclose that Dr. Harris did call me, and we had a phone conversation, and he said that he was going to call all council members regarding a little bit of background on this project. And one of the things that he mentioned is that he is working with the present developers and that it has been a much better process than the previous owner and all the heartache that went along with that. What I don't have clear in my mind yet, and I don't know how to address this, whether to the applicant or Dr. Harris, is the proposal that you have on the table that you do want to eventually develop that corner, and I, my understanding is that Dr. Harris very much likes to see that improvement of that corner. I want to understand what is the relevance of that with respect to the approval of the project tonight, and if that has any bearing on the decision-making.
From a legal perspective, the item before you and what you would be approving if you, if you went forward with what the applicant is requesting, is to have the 7th and Ocean corner not have a building on it. It would have some landscaping and some parking, and improvement to the piece of property right next to that, again, for parking and access. If, if, I guess part of your consideration, although it's not going to have any legal impact on what will happen on that property, part of your consideration may be the relationship that I'm hearing that is being discussed between the developer and the doctor, and that there is a potential for something to happen on that corner, but at this point, it's not something that you're going to be asked to approve, and it's not something that I would recommend that you condition the project on having that building built because there's so many unknowns of the process that would have to go through.
Any other questions at this time before we have public comment? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Ms. Breeze, when is the next Planning Commission meeting?
The next regular business is April 11th.
So essentially, taking this project back to the Planning Commission would exceed the date of March 26th, as required by the federal government for this tax allocation.
That is correct.
State, excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, you know, let me just say one thing, because you, what you said, both Bruno and, and Dr. Harris did call me, but in each case, I recommended that they write a letter to us, because I didn't want to chat about it. So in each case, I asked them for a letter, and to Councilmember Martin's request, a 10-minute break. All right, coming back to this item, we'll open this for oral communication. This is your opportunity to come and talk to us about it. So come on down. Say your name and tell us your story.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name's David Fainer, and I'm representing the new owner of the little 60-by-300-foot parcel at the corner of Cypress and 7th that is adjacent to this parcel. And the sole purpose of my speaking to you is to confirm, first, that there is indeed a 20-foot access easement that benefits the Cypress Court project that runs through the small parcel that I represent the owner. That's the 60-by-300-foot parcel, as I said, at the corner of Cypress and 7th. So you don't need to be concerned that that easement doesn't exist. It does. Second of all, there is a 20-foot-wide parking easement, and the building that is the senior housing project does not impact or overlie any portion of the parking easement. So again, as Mr. Rup said, those issues with respect to our property and the Cypress Court project are not in any significant, there's no significant issue at all there. And so in light of that, I hope you will support the request, and the project will move forward. We, just very briefly, will be coming in with some sort of a proposal at some point in time for that adjacent parcel, and I think that the tone of what we do will be set by the Cypress Court project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on, you guys, you're all sitting out there. If you want to talk about it, this is your chance.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Darrell Burgess, and I've been following this project for about five years. It seems like it goes before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission turns it down, it goes before the council, the council grants it. They ask for special favors constantly, like housing bonus density, which have been given. There've been a lot of issues surrounding this project, and here is yet another one. It seems very interesting that there are more and more issues about this seem to surface. I think the issue today has nothing to do with the time deadline for funding. It has something to do with whether or not this is the same project that was in fact authorized by the city council and incidentally turned down by the Planning Commission before that. It's not the same project. The project was zoned, first of all, they had to change the zoning about five years ago to even consider the project, because it was commercial. And then because they had suggested that they would have two commercial buildings along with a housing development, it was rezoned on that premise. Now, the very basis of that premise is being challenged. In fact, they're saying we will only build one building. Then there's an issue, maybe down the road, we'll do something else. Well, maybe they will, maybe they won't. Point is, this is sounding like a Planning Commission meeting here. This is not the Planning Commission, this is the city council. This should go to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Going? Going? Gone, okay. City attorney, could you speak to the question of whether or not it's Mr. Burgess's question, whether or not this is the same project?
Because there are differences between this project and the previous project, I can't say it's the same project. I understood the question to be whether or not this must be reviewed by the Planning Commission because of the change to the project, which is a different question, in my opinion. It doesn't need to be sent back to the Planning Commission. As one of the options you do have, which the staff report identified, is you could send it back to the Planning Commission if you wanted, but because this project became before you and you're the approving body, you don't have to send it back to the Planning Commission. Nor do I believe that if you don't, if you choose not to send it back to the Planning Commission, you aren't setting some kind of precedent that in the future, if there's ever another project that, that changes after the Planning Commission sees it, it doesn't create a precedent that you couldn't send that project back to the Planning Commission because all projects have different facts, and so this fact wouldn't set a precedent for some future action that you take.
So the facts of each project make them unique in a way?
Many times.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to repeat things I've said at every meeting. I think the project is a wonderful project. It's aesthetically pleasing, it'll be a nice, if approved, it'll be a nice entrance to our city, but as I've said in the past, I think it's a beautiful project in the wrong location. I still think that, but that's not what I'm here to decide tonight, so I just want to state that. I believe that the project is different than what was approved. I believe it's significantly different than what was originally considered when the zoning was changed. As Mr. Burgess pointed out, this was at one pointed out, this was at one point, a huge commercial lot to the entrance of our city. We rezoned it for this project with the understanding that there would be a significant portion of it in commercial, for commercial use. One of the pieces of commercial is now disappearing. The other piece is in question whether it will be commercial or whether it'll be professional office space. You know, it's probably a good location for commercial office space. We've got a beautiful, brand-new hospital across the street. There's a need for additional physician office buildings. You know, my idea of this is approved, I don't think, well, it's, this is my opinion, I believe it probably will be a commercial, or an office building and not retail space. I, I cannot find in myself to vote to approve this project tonight, but I probably will not oppose it either. Based on what I hear from the other council members, I'll listen, I will probably just abstain from the vote, but I will not oppose it based on what I've heard so far.
Okay. You know, I, I have one really large concern with this because I went to all those meetings, starting with the very first planning commission meeting and going forward. And the discussion in each of those meetings had to do with the fact that the commercial structures were gonna generate a revenue stream through sales tax and jobs and et cetera, particularly the one on the front corner, which is a prime retail location and would be a good sales tax generator, which would offset the, the impacts or the perceived impacts of the senior housing. And that's, that's a problem for me because we no longer have that income stream to offset the services that are, that we're gonna have to deliver to us to a low-income senior project. I'm wondering if a solution to that might be that the ground floor of the commercial building is restricted by, whatever you call it, a condition that it can only be used for retail space. If that would bring back some of that lost revenue and I believe with the density around there and the, and the hospital and everything else, it would be probably a pretty good restaurant site and some, some small, other small uses that could be sales tax generators and that might be a way to offset at least what I perceive as a loss and what I remember from all the discussions at all the various meetings that I've been to. Because I'd like, Mr. Burgess and others remember that these were considerations that were made on the scope of the entire project. And I understand that, you know, if we go way back, there was a higher density on the parcel, but there's still 60 units there. So, just, so I say it the right way, Joe, how would you, how would you create something like that if the council wanted to?
What the council could do is add a condition that would require some square footage of the ground floor of the 12,000-square-foot building to be some kind of sales tax generating use retail restaurant or something like that.
Simple as that. Okay. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're referring to Building Three, the 12,000-square-foot commercial building?
Yes.
So, you would like to put a condition that the first floor of Building Three will have retail and the second floor could be offices, correct?
Could be anything that's allowed in the zone on the second floor.
Okay. I, I will not oppose to that. I think that is a good idea to move this project forward. It's been a long time, you know. I hear that if we don't do anything, it's gonna sit vacant and is sure ugly the way it is right now. And I would like to see something done there, particularly something that is architecturally pleasing. I also would like to see that easement that Dr. Harris had to be improved. I don't think Dr. Harris will be able to just do that in a vacuum with having the rest of the vacant lot. So, he doesn't have a chance to improve his property and make his property look better. So, if there is a synergy between these two, between the developer and the owner of that property, such as that it will improve the appearance of that corner, I have a hard time saying no to it. I really have a hard time saying no to it. Now, if we can accommodate things like, you know, the requirement for retail that the mayor mentioned, let's, let's do it. But to just send it back to the planning commission because it's different, that's, that's a political thing. And really, what we're trying to do here is to get some development in this town and to improve the appearance of that property for Mr. Harris and for the future development of that site.
Question for the developer. My understanding from your presentation was that you're currently proposing to install the landscaping and the parking in your parcel in the front as part of this project? Yes?
Yes, that is right.
That was the one slide that you showed?
Yeah.
Palm trees and so on?
Yes. That's, and we would work with staff to get the specifications of that, but that, that will be improved concurrent with our property.
Okay. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I guess the way that I see this project, as is most projects, is that it's a moving target. So, of course, sometimes we think, you know, we have the target in the right place and then unfortunately, it shifts. So, we have to be somewhat adaptable and flexible with that. But I do have the same concern, you know, that you could possibly have an entire piece of property off the tax rolls. That's a huge concern of mine and I know that that was a concern of the planning commission. So, I actually have a question for staff and I don't wanna try to oversimplify a, a complex issue and this may not be possible. So, my apologies if it's a silly question. Is there any way to issue the building permit on the residential portion while the commercial and, or possible office component goes back to the planning commission? Or because it's, you know, one project on one property, you, you can't do that at this point?
What would you want to send the commercial building back for? The architecture has been approved on it.
I'm just trying to think for due process and getting them and their input as far as where we are at.
For the planning commission as far as looking at the condition of approval that you would like to place on it?
Mr. Mayor, may I offer something?
Okay, surely.
Okay. Regarding your, I wanna tell you our intentions so it's, so it's clear and in the record. We've, we intend and are gonna work with Dr. Harris to design a program on that corner that is gonna fit what he wants to do with his practice as well as what he wants to do in terms of maximizing the value of his property that's on the corner. It may, may or may not be appropriate for him to stay at that location. He may, he may find a better location that doesn't, isn't as high-profile, for example. And it may be in his best interest to work with us to develop that corner and then not locate his business in there, let's say. But because of the relationship I've been establishing with Dr. Harris over the past, really just month is about it, I've been getting to know him and I wanna work with him in a way that's gonna help our project because, you know, we care about that corner too. It's the entrance to our project just as much as it is to his. And ultimately, we, we are gonna work together to develop a partnership and a program and come back to the planning commission with something on that corner. That is our intention. And ultimately, for anybody to do anything of that property that's, that works well, it's gonna involve working with us as the owner of that small little strip, which is basically useless. You know, it doesn't have any value. And then his properties and really, he owns those two properties. So, there's a natural redevelopment opportunity as long as the ownership structure is cooperative. And that's what you're gonna get with us. And I think Dr. Harris would assert that, you know, especially with the bad history he's had with a prior developer. So, that is our intent and, and I think we will, you know, within months, be back in front of the planning commission with some type of program there at the corner. With regard to your idea, I totally get where you're going with the ground floor retail service. My request to you would be if we could modify that condition in such a way that the condition you proposed would be part of the 12,000-square-foot building, but if indeed, we came back and got approved a project that was at least 2,500 square feet or greater on the corner, that that condition could now come off of that 12,000-square-foot and, and we basically would have fulfilled the original program, you know, design. So, that would just allow us some flexibility in terms of the use of that 12,000-square-foot building in the future. So, you know, and in the end, I mean, I think you're gonna, in one way, you're gonna get 12,000-square-foot today versus just the 2,500-square-foot on the corner. You know, that is what you're gonna, what the city's gonna get in terms of office space or commercial space. And, and I'm okay with the condition that you, you know, the ground floor, whatever percentage of it, as long as we'd have the ability to shift that condition, if you will, to the corner where it belonged originally. So, that's, that's what I got.
Thank you for your comments. I guess my one concern at this point is, you know, although I do believe that there is a partnership being developed, I spoke in, during the break with the doctor as well, but unfortunately, nothing's in ink. So, the way that I'm looking at this is I have to be okay approving this project, understanding that forever and always, it may not have a development.
Yeah.
And that's how I'm considering it.
Fair enough.
And that's what's making it difficult at this point.
Yeah, fair enough.
Derek, do you mind if I ask a question following that? Lucille, now we're past what I remember. Let's see if you remember more than I remember. I remember discussions repeatedly about the front parcel in terms of a retail use. Was there discussion with regard to the building, the 12,000-square-foot building as an office use or as a retail use or some of the above? How's your memory?
I reviewed the staff report, so I think I can answer that question. The commission was extremely concerned, as you remember, with the placement of a retail establishment on that corner. Originally, the building was to be larger when the project was larger. So, the building closest to the residential was considered as an office building. There were medical providers that were looking at establishing in that office building. The retail was going to be on the corner. That was how the commission really was focused.
Yeah, you've warmed up my memory a little. The original building up on the front was about 5,000 feet, wasn't it? 4,000?
A little over 4,200.
4,200, okay. And the office building was actually larger in the original, in, in version one, it was bigger?
In the original, in the original version, it was, it was actually, Building Two was 83,000 square feet. Because that original office was incorporated with the podium parking and the residential, it wrapped around.
Wrapped around in the ground floor.
So, it became Building Three in the modification.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
I wanna kinda remind us that we're gonna put a requirement, or we're talking about putting a requirement of what's going to occupy the ground floor, but last week, we discussed commercial zoning, which is basically gonna open it up to whatever will wanna come in. So, I mean, we gotta think about what we did last week and tie it into what we're expecting this project to do later. One of my concerns is, we just talked about, if you're gonna put this building in later, what's not showing here is what's gonna happen now with loading zones and other traffic in there. The mitigation is, we're gonna just put a parking area in there now. You're gonna share with Dr. Harris and we're gonna forget about all the truck access and et cetera, et cetera, that was gonna happen when you do put the building in. This easement might have been a blessing. I'm kind of concerned. Like Councilmember Costa said earlier, you know, you've just formed a relationship with Dr. Harris and I'm just curious because of the concrete barricades are still around down there, you know, that have been there for a few years boxing the doctor in. I hope that this enhances the property values for Dr. Harris because it seems like he has been through quite a bit here. And I wanna make sure it's very amiable to him if this project does approve. A month doesn't usually do it for me, but I understand the timeline here.
Okay, Dr. Harris. Do you wanna come and say a word, please? I know you, you didn't necessarily wanna, he's shy.
No, I actually didn't wanna talk tonight, but I am Dr. Harris. So far, this relationship that's really been only going on for about a month has gone well. I've been very impressed with Pacific West Builders, particularly Caleb and their staff. So, I'm pretty comfortable at this point. I mean, it is premature to say everything is great, but I'm satisfied with the direction. It's certainly a much better relationship than whatever I had in the past. So, I'm encouraged. My, my preference tonight would be to, to assist them to get this thing going. But it was too early for me to say anything about what's gonna develop on the, on that site where my property is. I mean, just to throw something out there, I think what we should do is I should probably move somewhere and we should put a Panera in right on the corner.
[laughing]
That's, that's just my thought because that might be the perfect size and that's retail and everybody would be buying bread and getting coffee every morning and coming home. So, that's just an idea. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Very well spoken. Well, and you know, kind of along that line, I think maybe the, his offer to tie that retail square footage in the building to the ability to move it to the building that you guys can work together on might tie the two together well, too. No other lights. One of the other things that personally was a huge concern on this project, and I know we're not going all the way down all these roads, but there was a lot of discussion in the planning commission about a right turn only on the rear exit to prevent people from turning left onto Cypress and then going to that really bad intersection, particularly seniors. Would, do you have any difficulty with making your rear exit a right turn only for traffic safety? You can, you're welcome to speak to that.
Help me understand which, which part, which-
This is the, the easement that goes onto Cypress at the rear.
Okay, right.
So, that they, exiting that way, they would have to turn right rather than turning left and trying to get onto the Seventh in the middle of the hill.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, I don't have any problem, you know, as, as long as the traffic engineers and, you know, city engineer says it's okay. Seniors traditionally do not, you know, especially the lower-income seniors, do not generate the same level of traffic because they just typically don't have as many cars. So, I don't think that'll be a problem at all and I'd be okay with that if, if your city engineer said, you know, that was what, what would be good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready to make a motion with the restriction that you're proposing? Or are we going to have more discussions or what? But it feels like we're talking this subject to death. So, I would like to call the question.
How about if we go once around, see if anybody has a question, but I think we're close to it. Is that okay? Thank you. Councilmember Lingle?
No, I've stated my piece and, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you brought up the point about the right turn because as everyone knows, my concern with the project was, for safety, I believe, a right turn only preventing people from turning left and going to that intersection of Seventh and Cypress and trying to get on there. I think the right turn only is a really good suggestion and I thank you for that. As opposed to, here again, it's not, I mean, we're talking about, but Caleb, you mentioned lower-income seniors don't drive a lot. There's no place for them to walk there either. That was my other concern. You know, they're stuck on that corner. There again, that's why I say a beautiful project in the wrong location. So, maybe there's something you can do with that because I, I'd hate to see, let's see, there's 60 units, figure 1.5 or 1.2 people per unit. You know, 70, 75 people or more up there with no place to go but that one square corner. So, something else for you to consider, so.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, the, the only thing that I can, that I'm gonna say kind of in a counter to that is the fact that we do have Costa and Raina right next door, which is another low-income senior. senior area, and so far, I'm pretty confident that none of them have been mowed down yet. So, I'm gonna, I'm probably, I'm gonna vote to go ahead and support the project. It's the phasing of it. I mean, the project's approved. I just see that it's not gonna, we're just gonna have to move with it.
And you have an access gate to Costa's and Raina as part of it, if I recall correctly, and that has not changed, has it? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think I'm happy. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I think that because there's been some good discussion and some possible solutions brought forward, I was just curious if we'd be opening up to one more last public comment. It sounded like there may have been some comments out in the public, and they wanted to speak, and I noticed that there was a planning commissioner in the back who may be interested in saying something from his experience with the project. Thank you.
Councilmember Martner, do you have any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And is there anyone that would like a final last discussion of this? Anyone in public? If you don't stand up and run down here, we're not gonna let you talk. Come on.
Mayor and council, I have one thought.
You have to say your name.
I'm Robert Schmiedeke. I live about a block and a half from the project, right there on Cypress. I haven't been run over yet. Close, but not yet. The kids on skateboards coming down that hill. Your requirement to put a restaurant or a retail outlet in that building, if you could put that building up on that screen, I don't know about you. You're a local businessman, and you've made businesses work, but I would never open a restaurant or a retail outlet in that building. It's, what is it? It's breaking three of the rules: location, location, location. It's a darn fine building for offices, for physicians, or insurance companies that are dealing with medical issues, because it's right across the street from that hospital. But I can't imagine a requirement that they actually open up a restaurant or a retail outlet of some sort on a portion of that thing. If they want to, you've already cleared that way with your C zoning, which was really a good idea. I like that. It's gonna bring a lot of business to this city. It's gonna work out fine. My biggest concern is how it affects the good doctor, that he doesn't have anything in writing from these folks. It's not that I don't trust this gentleman. I'm sure his intentions are good, but I really would like to make sure that the doctor doesn't come up short on this deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
[inaudible]
Nah, go ahead. We'll give you a chance. Come on, say it again. It's kind of a different kind of a meeting.
Well, I kind of agree with what he just said. I think this could be a really cool project if they were to, in fact, move Dr. Harris to a more desirable area and put a really nice commercial restaurant or something in the spirit of what this new developmental committee was gonna talk about tonight, something that will attract visitors from out of town, and a bistro, maybe something nice up there in front. But we have to have some type of a guarantee, and you yourself came up with this idea the last time we talked about this, and it might be appropriate here, that the project would be authorized, that they could get their funding, they can pull their permits, but they can't occupy it until we see that building in the front. That was your idea the last time, and it was a good one.
Anyone else? No, okay. Yeah, that one doesn't work this time, unfortunately, but one more time for the developer. Can I ask you a question? So, if we condition your 12,000-square-foot building so the ground floor is retail, which I think we all admit is less desirable, would you find that as a motivator for you and Dr. Harris to work something out?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I suggested the modification to your idea, because from my point of view, in harmony with what he just spoke, that is not a good location for retail. So, it basically means to us that we essentially have a likely vacant downstairs building, producing no revenue, yet we're still paying taxes and doing those things. So, we're motivated to resolve everything, because I've enjoyed working with the doctor, and from my point of view, it's a good corner to work on, and it is a disincentive, what you've offered, for me to, like, not do something about it, because, you know, and it's in Dr. Harris's interest to work, too, because he wants to maximize the value of his property, and that's what he spoke to me many times. And so, on the record, we will be back. I mean, Dr. Harris and I do feel like we will work together. Of course, there's no guarantees, and of course, you know, I mean, I can't make him do anything, just like he can't make me do anything, but I strongly believe that we will be back in front of you, and I'm committed to that process.
And you promise you'll move the concrete blocks?
Once I own the property, I promise I'll move the concrete blocks, yes.
Scout's honor.
Yes, scout's honor, and hopefully, that'll be by about Friday, if you guys give me the okay.
And you could move them on Monday, then?
I could move them hopefully next week, yes. I don't know about Monday, but we'll, the end of next week.
You can store them anywhere on the property.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Is there, are there any other questions? I'm sorry, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none. Are there any other questions from the council? Let me take a run at a motion, see if I get it all right. Number one, will I add the, we'll, let's see. Yeah, I didn't get very far on that one, did I? I gotta get my glasses on. We will, under item A, grant the request, and items one through six, and item seven will be that the developer will landscape and install parking in the front parcel under conditions approved by the City of Lompoc. Number two, that the ground floor of the 12,000-square-foot building will be limited to the use of businesses who are sales tax generators. And number three, that if, if and when the new building is developed on the front of the parcel, that requirement will transition to the other building in an equal number of square feet. And number four, the rear exit will be limited to a right turn. And I think I got them all. And, oh, she's pointing at me. One more.
Marilyn, I was a little bit confused. My apologies. You said there would be a 5,000-square-foot on the, on the building.
The ground floor's 6,000, so we just wrapped it all up.
The ground floor, but then you said the same number of square feet. Did I hear that right? For the next building?
When they build the building in the front, that number of square feet needs to move to the new building as a retail use.
So, you're, but, okay, that's 6,000 square feet being moved over.
Yes. I'm not sure if the, is it six and six? Six up and six down? Yeah, so it would be six and six.
But what you're saying, then, is we're going to be releasing the requirement on Building Two if a building in the front is built that is 6,000 square.
That it's at least 6,000 square feet.
But the original proposed is only 20.
Yeah, but the new one they're proposing is much larger, because it'll incorporate Dr. Harris's property.
And although I see that as a possibility, I think that you're putting, that's like a huge constraint on that piece of property, because then you're eliminating any projects that may have a commercial building of a smaller size.
They're welcome to come back and ask for an amendment if they need it. Do you have any difficulty with that?
No, I don't.
Let me get a second first, so we can talk about it. Could I have a second, please?
I second.
Okay, now come back. Sorry about that.
What I was trying to do was, with the 2,500 square feet, is restore your original approvals, you know, that you made. So, what would be kind of a conflict would be that if, let's say, we ended up with 5,000 square feet of, to your point, retail on the corner, right, and then all of a sudden, now we have 1,000 left over from the main structure, and, you know, now what, I have 1,000 square feet of retail I can't use. So, perhaps with your motion, we could, something more like that the, you know, that it wouldn't be a square footage-based thing, but the corner building will be a minimum of 2,500 square feet, in which case, the condition to do ground floor on the retail, or retail on the ground floor of the main building would be removed, as long as we deliver at least 2,500 square feet on the corner, which is what we, what we were supposed to deliver before we came back to you this time. And I can tell you, practically speaking, that's a waste to do 2,500 square feet, because that corner is way too important to just do 2,500 square feet. So, I think, based on preliminary architectural, it can accommodate about 8,000 square feet, roughly, and when you count all the properties together, and that would be more in harmony with the proposal. But if Pandera wanted to come in, or Panera with a, and they want a 5,000-square-foot unit, we'll deliver a 5,000-square-foot unit, right? So, that's, that flexibility would be helpful.
I guess I'm looking for a little more leverage for the good doctor.
I got you, I got you.
So, I, I'll stay with my 6,000, and you guys can work it out.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, the 6,000 on the corner is to be retail, restaurant?
Correct. Some, a retail use, a sales tax generating retail use.
Or more than one.
Yes. Okay. Do you have any question about what I moved, or are you good with it? Okay.
Marilyn, I just want to clarify, so the applicant can apply for an amendment to that in the case that they're ready to build that building on the corner?
Well, if they built the building on the corner, they can just move it over, and they don't have to do anything. When they go through the planning commission, if they wanted to use less than 6,000 feet, then they would have to apply for amendment to the.
Right, right, okay, I confirm.
Yep. Okay? All right. Did I miss anything else? Nope. Any other discussion from the council? Nope. Okay. A vote on the motion, please. And that passes 4-0-1 abstention. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for being civil and friendly. Yeah, it'll work. Okay. And now, we'll move to item eight. City of Lompoc 2011 General Plan Report, Progress Status of Implementing General Plan Policies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. This project, or this report was before the council at March 6, and the council asked us to go back and to revise language that was included under homeless and transitional housing. We did obtain the staff report that went to the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors on October 18, and we have amended the language as shown with the bold and the strikeout on the staff report, and the internal language has been amended within the report. So, hopefully, this follows the direction that the council wanted to see. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay. Councilmembers Martner and Costa, I think you raised this, you caught this error and raised this, and perhaps your insight on this altered wording.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I trust that the staff did go back and look at the actual numbers, and that was the intent of this, to build up an accuracy to the present condition as to whether these numbers are exactly right. I can only assume that the staff did the job correctly.
Okay, is there any other questions from the council for this time? Okay, we'll come back to you in a minute, Ms. Brees, and now we take public comment on this issue. Is there someone here that would like to speak to item eight? Nope. Last chance. Public comment is closed. Coming back to council for discussion. Is there any discussion at this time, or any further questions for Ms. Brees? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion and a second for this, please. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second, please.
Marilyn, I'll second that, and just wanted to recognize that part of the assistance was from public comment from Carol Benham as well.
Good, thank you. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And item 10. New Business Request for the City Resolution Supporting the Inclusion of Representatives of the Wine Industry in the Santa Barbara County Wyndordance Review and Supporting the Exclusion of Charitable Events from Being Counted in the Winery Ordinances or as special or winery events.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Theresa Galavan. Santa Barbara County intends to update its winery ordinance, and there'll be several items discussed as part of that process, including potentially limiting the number of events that wineries can have, the number of attendees. And the Santa Rita Hills Wine Growers Alliance and Santa Barbara County Vintners Association approached the Economic Development Committee with a request for support for the position that, request for support for a resolution from the city, that the city would consider their request to have representatives of the wine industry that would be active participants in the discussion and debates regarding the Santa Barbara County Winery Ordinance Review, that the Santa Rita Hills Wine Growers Alliance and the Vintners Association would like to be at the table in those discussions with the county, and they also would like to have support that charity events not be considered part of the number of special events that would be limited through that ordinance process. So, that is what we have before you here, to have the city support of a resolution so that these groups could be participants at the table in the discussion, and that charitable events would not be included in those limitations. And the Economic Development Committee looked at this resolution that came before you today and unanimously supported it, so that is why it is here before you today. And joining me in this presentation of this item is Economic Development Committee member Stephen Pepe.
Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Stephen Pepe. Our vineyard and residence is about 10 miles east of here in the county, and our winery is on Laurel between RNS and back of the cement plant. I'd like to briefly discuss three things: the current winery ordinance, proposals being made regarding charity events, the resolution itself. Presently, under county ordinances, if you want to build a winery or have a tasting room in the county, you have to fall into one of three tiers: tiers one, two, and three: small, medium, and large. If you are tier one, you have no tasting room. You can have four events a year, limited to 150 people. Tier two, you are, have a tasting room of a specified size, eight events a year, limited to 150 persons per event. Tier three, you have a larger tasting room, 12 events a year, and you are limited to 200 persons per event. There is a group called the Valley Alliance in the eastern end of the valley, in the San Ynez area, and they are proposing to cap or limit the number of events at charities, number of charity events at wineries. And the issue, as you can imagine, is, given a limited number of charity events, if you are forced to count the charity event as one of your four, eight, or 12 events, there's gonna be a reluctance on the part of many wineries to support our local charities. Now, I recognize this is a county issue, quote, "It's not within the jurisdiction of the city council." However, the city council has, in the past, expressed its views and the views of its citizens on things outside of its jurisdiction, like the recent redistricting for the supervisory councils, positions, and the senate and assembly on the state behalf. In terms of the very specifics, we have representatives from the Hospital Foundation In terms of the very specifics, we have representatives from the Hospital Foundation, from the Turducken's and the Lompoke Library, and the Valley Haven, who will discuss why it is important for events to be held at wineries either on vineyards or in the county, and how they will endure to the direct benefit of Lompoke and its citizens. The resolution addresses two parts, as Teresa's indicated. The first is that we, we, the wine industry, should participate in the discussions. We've had some preliminary meetings with county officials, and it is by no means clear that that is what's going to happen. The usual procedure is for the planning folks to draft a proposal, have a series of focus groups, either redraft or make amendments, and then have it go to a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors. We think a better way would be for the wine industry and the other stakeholders to sit down, see what our differences are, see where we agree, and see how much we can resolve before you end up at public hearings and supervisory meetings. And we think that, for the reasons I indicated, that the charity events ought to be excluded from whatever the number is that ends up being held at wineries.
Steve, charity events are currently excluded, correct?
They are not. It is unclear. It talks about, the ordinance just says special events or winery events without any definition of what those include. And just so to put this in perspective, many of you may have heard of CASA, which is a group started by the Santa Barbara judges to train volunteers to represent foster children in their homes. They had an event scheduled at Bridlewood. Tickets printed, posters put up. 10 days before, somebody complains to the planning commission, that's over their Bridlewood's limits of events, and so they had to run around and find another winery that they could hold that event at. So this is not a theoretical or hypothetical issue.
And, I'm sorry, who was it that dropped the hammer on them? The county planning commission?
Yeah, the complaint was made to the county planning commission.
Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Pepe, if I wanted to have a, I'm going to be kind to my wife if she's watching. If I want to have a 40th birthday party for my wife, 39th birthday party for my wife, and I want to invite 50 people, I was going to have it at your winery, could I do that under this ordinance?
It would depend whether or not that is viewed as a winery event, or whether that is viewed as an event of a private citizen. And quite frankly, there is no guidance in the existing county ordinance regarding that, and that's one of the reasons why we think winery folks ought to be dealing directly with the planning staff, because we've got a lot of experience with these kinds of issues, and give them our insights, and give them examples of how winery and vineyard venues are used for events. But the answer is, it's unclear.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it seems that the county has the same issues that the city has, which is very vague ordinances that lead themselves to interpretations that, you know, might be perceived as unfair to some people, or biased, or whatever. So by having this proposal here, which basically specifically will state that a charity event is to be excluded of this count, right, would make the ordinance a little bit more precise, and I'm always for that, because it's the number of complaints that we get routinely regarding, well, the interpretation of the ordinance was this, this way here, and then it was done that way over there, and there is the feud that starts, which I can see that probably will start between vineyards and wineries and owners, that they're being treated differently. So I'm all for that, to establish clarity in the ordinance, and it seems that there is clarity here. I do have a question, though. Why does the ordinance exist, to start with? Is there any particular restriction that the county is looking for as far as, what, traffic, sales of wine, law enforcement? What is driving the ordinance?
What is driving it is mostly in the eastern end of the San Ynez Valley, and it's two items. One is, if you've been to Los Olivos in the last four or five years, you'll notice they've gone from two or three tasting rooms to like 15 or 18 of them. And that is cause concern, because that attracts tourists. They stay at the local hotels, they park their cars in Los Olivos, and then the local folks in Los Olivos can't park their cars, and they run into traffic, and that's one issue. The other issue is that if you do have a winery in an area where most of the lots are five or 10 acres, and somebody has an event for 200 people, that creates, again, more traffic and more congestion, and the argument is made on the other side, that that interferes with the quiet enjoyment that the folks who are residents in that area want. So it's basically those two arguments. Our concern, from the industry point of view, is we recognize all of that, and there are, I think, ways to resolve that, but that really doesn't apply to the Santa Rita Hills. The smallest, there are two lots that I'm aware of, of 10 acres each. Everybody else is 40 or more acres. We're surrounded by, all of our neighbors are either wineries, vineyards, and/or folks who are farming. So we're not in an area where there's a lot of small parcels with residences on them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I wish we had a parking problem here, but I wanted to thank you, Mr. Pepe, because, you know, you did recognize a council policy, and you did your homework on it, and it begins in our book with legislation at another government level generally will be formally supported or opposed only if the issue directly affects the city of Lompoke, and I feel that this one does. I want to mention that, you know, you are in the 93436 area code here, and we are west of 101, so.
I'm in the Lompoke post office, too.
There you go. So I just, I want to say, I think that there's way too much county involvement in this, and I intend to support your resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me, we'll get a few more people up here, and don't go away, we might have some questions. Who's next? Come on down.
One more hour in that seat, and I've had it. I agree with Councilwoman Starbuck. What a shame to have too much tourism, and your hotels filled, and your restaurants overflowing, and, oh my gosh, that'd be horrible. I'm Alice Milligan. I'm president of the Lompoke Hospital Foundation, and some may say that this issue has nothing to do within the city of Lompoke, but I beg to differ, it definitely does. I'm certain that all of you are very much aware of the problems which nonprofits are experiencing in this downturn in the economy. We need to look at all avenues to raise funds for our nonprofits in order to be profitable. One of these avenues is hosting events at the various wineries we are privileged to enjoy in Santa Barbara County. Wineries in Santa Barbara County have been very generous to nonprofits, providing facilities, donating wines, and advertising our events. Requiring that a nonprofit event be included as one of the events will be a disservice to the nonprofits, as wineries will be forced to deny our request in favor of a more lucrative event in order to stay within their allocated number of events. I urge you to approve this resolution, and urge the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission that is looking at this ordinance to see fit to include a representative from the winery industry on the committee to study this issue. Certainly, they have the expertise and knowledge, and I recommend that you support this resolution. I think that it definitely does involve Lompoke, and I know that some of the wineries out in the, outside of the city of Lompoke pay taxes. I know they certainly pay the hospital bond taxes, and so definitely, Lompoke is involved, and I urge you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Lompoke. For the record, my name is Linial White, and I am representing the Turducken Dinner Group. I'm one of the founding members. There are other members in the audience. There was more early on in the meeting, but they've since gone home. But Dwayne Homedahl's here, Stephen Cathy Pepe, and we are a group of like-minded, oh, and councilmember Bob Lingle, can't forget him. We are a group of like-minded people who care about the quality of life in our community. And to that end, we think one of the components of quality of life is our libraries. And so in 2003, when we formed the Turducken Dinner Group, we began raising money to support our local libraries. And I'm pleased to report to you, over those years, we have generated $160,000 that we have donated to the Lompoke Vandenberg Village and Beelton Libraries. Now, I've got to tell you, this would not have been possible if it wasn't our relationships and good friends in the wine industry. I can tell you unequivocally that the wine industry, every winery that's located in the city, every winery that's on Highway 246, and probably every winery that grows grapes in the Santa Rita Hills, has in some way or another participated in one of our fundraising events. So we just could not do what we do without their support. So it's, it was my direction from the group to come here this evening and to support our friends in the wine industry, and we are asking you to please accept the resolution. We all know that good policy comes from input from all of the stakeholders, and bad policy comes when you don't provide the input from the stakeholders. So we're asking you to please encourage and direct participation in this ordinance development with the wine industry, and especially, especially include the section that eliminates the penalty for the wine industry supporting the nonprofits in our community. And I do have to tell you in closing that before I came here this evening, I did have conversations with one of the planning commissioners for the county. I also had conversations with citizens within our community, and one of the comments made to me was, hey, this is a county ordinance affecting wineries in the county, and why are you guys spending your time dealing with something that's really none of your concern? And I have to echo the comments made before me. The reality is, is the wine industry is a component of our economic development engine for this community. It's not the only one, but it is one of the most promising components of our economic development drive, and the quality of life that we share in this community is a direct result of the nonprofits and what they do for the various groups in this city. So it is a city issue, it is something that we need to speak out on, and we encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, would you like to echo? You would, good. Come on down.
Mayor Lynn, and city council, and members of the public, I'm sort of echoing, but from the government side, as director of the library, just want to take a moment to confirm that the generosity of Ventners in the Santa Rita Hills appellation directly impacts the Lompoke library system in a positive way. As you well know, our city provides mandated services and also has to find the funds for the quality of life services. We know that's a challenge for all of us in these times, and the library is very fortunate to have two well-organized support groups, the Friends for Immediate Needs, and the Foundation for Capital Projects, and a book endowment. About nine years ago, they were able to raise their fundraising up considerably because of the efforts of the Turducken Dinner Group. And as Linial has mentioned, a big component of that is the participation and pouring at events by Ventners in our area. And I just brought a program from the 2009 event, and I counted 14 Ventners who were supporting by participating that year. The direct impacts of increased library support include funding of summer reading programs, the purchase of materials in newer formats such as ebooks, replacement of aging computers, and all the licensing and software required in a public use environment, the enclosure of an area in the lobby of the library to provide better service, and new furnishings to make the library more welcoming. So retracing our path, the area wineries participate actively in events that benefit the library. The library supplements government funding with money from the Friends and Foundation to enhance services. The quality of life in our city is improved by the higher level of library services, and economic development is enhanced by an improved quality of life. There's a direct and positive connection, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy Knight, and I'm the executive director of Valley Haven. As some of you know, Valley Haven is a nonprofit organization, which is, we have operated an adult day program in the Lompoke community since the year 2000. We provide care to dependent seniors, many of whom have dementia, are frail, or are socially isolated. Our program also provides much-needed respite care to the caregivers of these dependent seniors. Fundraising at wineries located within the county has enabled us to continue our mission, which has directly benefited Lompoke citizens. In the past few years, we have raised approximately $58,000 at events held at local wineries. Local wineries have further supported our organization by donating generously in the form of auction items and wine to be poured at our events. For an organization of our size, $58,000 is a substantial sum of money. $58,000 is the equivalent of 1,600 days of daycare provided at a reduced rate. Our Lompoke program also employs or provides jobs for six people, all of whom live within the city of Lompoke. Wineries provide more than just a location for our events, they provide an experience. As you are well aware, special events and fundraisers are a common occurrence in most communities in this county. Wineries provide a location that allows us to take advantage of the beautiful scenery in the area, and helps to provide a unique experience, not just another dinner in a banquet room. We all receive numerous invitations to attend events, and we see posters advertising events plastered all over town. Many times, the location of the event can be a big draw to get people to attend. People expect more these days. They want to be entertained, not just fed a meal. They want to go someplace new, see something they haven't seen before, or do something unique. Wineries help to fill that niche of an interesting and beautiful location for an event. Being a nonprofit in this economic climate is difficult, as I'm sure you hear all the time. We are constantly seeing our funding sources diminish or disappear altogether. Money from government sources and foundations is decreasing. At the same time, the individuals are asking for scholarships in order to attend our program. As our program is one of the more affordable options for people looking for care for dependent seniors, we try and do everything we can to accommodate people's finances by giving them partial scholarships. As a result, this leaves a gap in what people can afford to pay and what it truly costs to operate our program. That is why fundraising is vital to our continued existence. I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Bedford, and my family, and people within my family, own four businesses in Lompoke and two in Solving, and so I'm here to speak from a business aspect, that not only do the nonprofits benefit from the things that these great wineries do, but so do the businesses here in Lompoke. The posters that you're talking about around town, I print most of them, and so what comes around goes around, and so I'm here to say that I support it as a business person. I'm also on the Solving Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors with Michael Lerner, who is the president of the Santa Barbara County Ventners Association, and he just wanted me to let you know that the problems that they have with this, what's happening now, and why they want the wineries to be involved in this long-term planning, is that it's just important for both valleys equally, and that they should have a voice in it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Manning, businessman in Lompoke. I'm not going to belabor the point, because you've heard it from everybody, but what I will say to you is, if you I will say to you is, if you talk to the nonprofits in Lompoc, and that's what we're talking about here, because that's what you folks take care of, you talk to the nonprofits, you're going to find out, they all benefit from the wineries. So that's really what you ought to be considering, and I urge you to support the resolution.
Dwayne Homdahl in Lompoc. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but a lot of times, it's a little bit interesting to have some history. 1998, Richard Lingueria came to Lompoc and started to make wine. That was the first winery in the city of Lompoc. We have now somewhere around 21 different wineries. We have somewhere close to 17 different tasting rooms. So Lompoc is very much involved. Also, the Santa Rita Hills is in the Hospital District, and it's in the Lompoc Unified School District. So that area is all part of it. In 1984, I helped with a gentleman here back take 22 wineries that Santa Barbara County had in the Vintners Association at that time, back to DC. And you can see what's going, we've got well over 200 different wines in every size. So it's a major component in all fundraisers that we have had. And I think that's why everybody's here is excited. It's not only Lompoc and Santa Naz Valley, but Santa Maria Valley, the number of wineries. And the people are going to, we're bringing people out of LA and all other areas coming in here. And as you heard tonight, they're going to bring people from foreign countries. And they know about Lompoc, because the one reason why they know about Lompoc and foreign countries, because they've seen the movie Sideways. And of course, Pino, of course, was in that show. But it is, it is a very major event, and it has made a lot of money for people who are in the nonprofit. So it's a very, getting the cities involved, it's not only Lompoc, it's going to be every city in the county of Santa Barbara, because they all benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Oh, shoot, is that me?
Yeah, that's you. Shy and bashful as you are.
Don't hit the button yet. Don't even.
My name is Jim, my name is Jim Filek. I am the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara County Vintners Association. Honorable John Lynn, Mayor, City Council Members, Legal Administrator, Clerk, and The wine industry is more than just a wine industry. It is a natural resource. It is like the flowers of Lompoc. It is like the Channel Islands. It draws people here. People come here because of the wine industry, because of the vineyards, because of what we do. Sometimes you will hear a word associated with it called profit, as if that's a bad word. That profit, as if agriculture is not supposed to be profitable, allows us to sustain our vineyards. We maintain a sustainable vineyard. But guess what? We also maintain a sustainable community. So I represent the entire county, but a significant number of the people who work in the wineries in Santa Barbara County live in the 93436 zip code. They live here. They shop here. They earn their, earn their living from our wineries, and even wineries that aren't in this county, but they live here in Lompoc. And what's happening now with this winery ordinance review, if you're asking the question, what is actually going on? What are they trying to do? They are trying to redefine agriculture, and they're trying to redefine wineries. And so we're, we are so thankful that we've been able to have five very, very great vintners festivals here. And I have to tell you that no, nobody has supported us like the city of Lompoc, and continue, continues to support us at our festivals like the people of Lompoc. And the Vintners Association is incredibly in debt to all of you for that. And we do come to you again, and seeking your support in this resolution, because we need to be a stakeholder at the table as people redefine what agriculture is. Agriculture is not Ag 1, 5, and 10 residential units that have absolutely no agricultural use on them at all. Except they might have a horse. Wineries produce wine, and as part of that, they sell wine. But they are called bars. No bar buys 40 acres of land or five acres of land, plants a vineyard, takes three to four years to establish that vineyard before its first harvest, picks that crop, produces it, ages it, pays all the taxes on it, keeps it in inventory, has paid for all its inventory before it pours its first taste. Show me a bar or a restaurant that has paid for its entire inventory before it sells its first taste. That is why wineries are allowed to have tasting rooms, so that they can sell their product. They are not bars. They are different than bars, totally different. And that's why the laws are set up that way. And that's why we seek your support, so that we can keep, we can maintain the definitions of the wine industry. And that's why, have you ever been to an event that has not been supported, a charitable event that has not been supported by the wine industry? We give to everyone. My two favorite nights in May are giving the scholarships to Lompoc and to Gabriel, especially Lompoc High. I've never, I've never been to a high school where it is more appreciated than Lompoc. I love going there to give the, I'll never get, even when I'm gone, I will continue to give the scholarship there. I will send it in from heaven. So I urge you to, to support this resolution. And again, thank you for your continued, continued support of the Vintners Association and the wineries in Santa Rita Hills and throughout the rest of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, who else? Last chance. Go and, go and gone.
I guess I want to chime in with three things about this. Number one, I guess I have no idea why the county's going down this road. You know, we're, we're moving to try to make it easier, and they're moving to try to make it harder, so maybe we just annex everything from here to there, and you could all be part of the city, and we'll be done with it, but that's probably not the best solution. I would like to first thank Steve. I've been to several events raising money at his house, and particularly the Valley Haven event was, was outstanding. And I know that's a really, really big number for them. The Haybales and Cocktails comes to mind, and the amount of money that's raised by that event that supports the Lompoc Valley in Bloom and all the things they do. But just on getting off the big events to one little thing, as part of the mayor's ball, each mayor brings some things to auction off. And so I thought, well, wouldn't it be really cool if we got a case of one bottle of wine each from a bunch of wineries? Except by the time we got done, we had, I think, 15 bottles, which is a different kind of case, but it's okay. And that one, one donation of one bottle of wine from 15 wineries generated $1,300 in auction sales for the United Way Literacy Program. Just that one little thing. So this is a tremendously important thing to our nonprofits. And as I have said repeatedly, we could not be who we are without all of the nonprofits and all of the things that they do, both from a financial standpoint and from, the word "quality of life" was used, but from a quality of life standpoint. So, Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I can answer your first question, why the county's going down this road. It's like many other times when a small minority tries to impose themselves on the majority, and I believe this is an instance, where there's a small number of individuals that want to make sure that they're peace and quiet, that they, and they do deserve it. I don't say they, it's not something that they don't deserve, but they're trying to impose their desires on the majority of the Santa Barbara County. I believe the majority of people in Santa Barbara, the majority of people in the valley, probably feel the way that we feel, or we may feel after this evening. And that's that the nonprofits provide a lot to this Santa Barbara County in general, to the people of this county. So why, why it's happening? It's because the, the small, small minority is trying to impose their will on the majority. If we pass this request for this resolution tonight, it's not going to stop right here. That doesn't mean that the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors will take our letter, our resolution, and say, you know, Lompoc City Council is not in favor of this, so we're going to stop it. So I believe that, or I feel that we all need to appear at the Board of Supervisors meeting, just like you did tonight. Voice your opinions. This City Council, if we feel the same way, we need to appear before them if we so choose to pass this resolution tonight. Because it, just this resolution, as I said, will not stop this. We need to make sure that we show up at the Board of Supervisors and voice our opinion there. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Starbuck, you want to weigh in on this?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, let's go down the row once. I had my say. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Of course, I'm in support of the wine industry. I think it's been a great industry for the city of Lompoc. But I'd like to be clear that I believe City Council is cherry picking in this regard. So I, I'm going to be supporting this, because we've had a huge number of folks show up and support this. But if you replace the name in regards to Santa Barbara County, or excuse me, Vintners Association, Wine Growers Alliance with the Schumash Casino, you know, you're basically cherry picking, one's appropriate support and the other one isn't. And that becomes an issue for me, because in our policy, it says legislation is really what we need to focus on in our jurisdiction, and we're focusing on legislation here, whereas with the casino project, it was actually not legislation, it was something we could have supported based on our guidelines. So I just want to say I support this, and I'm glad the citizens came out, because it's allowing me to support this. But I just want Council to be very wary that there may be some criticism, and possibly rightfully so, that we are cherry picking who and in what cases to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Well, you know, these councils are so arbitrary all the time. Nevertheless, this is about probably our biggest livelihood, livelihood in this town, perhaps the most growing industry in this town, so I really cannot look away from it, and I have to support it, and I will support it. I will support the resolution. I would like to tell the Executive Director of the Vintners that you need to support us and bring that, you bring, to bring that back to Lompoc. You need to bring it back to Lompoc. I am not volunteering until you bring it back to Lompoc. I stop volunteering. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Filek. I'm the Executive Director, oh, I already said it. Well, now, we had five years here, and, and we are going to come back, because however, I, the whole county. And so it was with a heavy heart that, that we left, but we had some people in other parts of the valley who said, how come it's always in, in Lompoc? And I said, because Councilmember Martin wants it there. And they said, well, we're going to talk to her.
Because we have the best wines.
Well, I tried saying that, but I, it's, I can't be quite as diplomatic as, as you are diplomatic, I mean. So it will be back. When? We haven't, we haven't even had the first one away yet. I have to take off my shoe. It will, but you have to give us a year or two away. They may chase us back here, you know, in May. You never know, especially, but, but we will be back here. We loved it here, and River Park was, was a beautiful sight, and as I said, the support you gave us, we are indebted to you, and continue, because the people from Lompoc still are helping us everywhere, so thank you.
You know, I want to, I want to say, there is one downside to coming back. A lot of attendees that would have gone in the past aren't with us anymore, because we killed all the gophers out there. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, they won't, they won't be coming to sample.
I was going to say, I'd bring my rabbit, but with that, I'm not going to.
Councilmember Martin, are you ready to make a motion?
I thought that Councilmember Starbuck was making the motion. I move that the City Council adopt the, or support the resolution as stated. I already closed my book as stated in Agenda Item Number...
10.
10.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. And to the maker of motion in the second, could we include sending a letter to each county supervisor and each planning commissioner within this? That you call good with that?
And send a letter to each of the supervisors regarding the support that is being stated in Agenda Item Number 10.
Thank you. And a second.
I'll second again.
Thank you. And is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we're going to come back to Item 5, which frankly, I misunderstood, and I no longer feel the need to pull it, but I already done it. So if there's, is there anyone here that wants a discussion of Item 5?
I move that we approve staff recommendations.
Hang on just a second. You guys okay with going forward with 5? I un polled it in effect. Okay. And a, and a motion, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lingle, go ahead.
I just moved that we approve staff recommendations. Well, we probably need public comment first.
It's a consent item.
It was.
I was mistaken. It was my bad. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close, close public comment. And I still need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we go to council requests and announcements. So I'm sorry, final oral, we don't know, written communications, I'll get it right yet. Do we have any written communications? Mayor and Councilmember.
Mayor and Councilmembers, I received a letter dated March 5th from Stephen Zodovich of Santa Rita Hills Wine Center located at 300 North 12th Street. I did distribute the letter to each of you, but I do have copies that I will once again In Mr. Zodovich's letter, he is requesting that the city provide water at an agricultural water rate on a five-acre site to farm the property for producing a combination of flowers and organic fruits and vegetables. And Mr. Zodovich notes, while this site will eventually be developed, until such time, the property will be farmed by the Santa Rita Flower Farm, and thus creating a more desirable entrance to the city. So in response, and with council's consensus, this request item will be agendized for council's consideration and direction, having staff return at a future meeting to report on establishing an agricultural water rate, outlining the parameters of this rate. And so I'm asking, is it council's consensus to agendize this written request?
Councilmember Costa. Okay. Yeah, I would certainly like to see this go forward, so I, I would be happy to agree with bringing that back as an agenda item. Looking for head nods. Yeah. Okay. And that, you have a unanimous approval to bring that back?
Yep. Okay. And that, you have a unanimous approval to bring that back? Are there any other written communications? Take that as a no.
You're correct.
Okay. Oral communications last two minutes. Anybody want to say something? Nope? Going once, going twice, gone? Okay. And council, council, hmm, is it still redevelopment agency request?
No.
No? Okay. Council successor agency request, comments, and meeting reports. And we'll start from the left this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that I will be absent on the April 3rd meeting, council meeting, because of business travels. And I won't be able to participate via telephone because I'll be in transit. And this brings me to the other subject is, is that the mayor pulled out an, an agenda item tonight that I was very much interested in, in hearing. And it causes me great concern that it was pulled out without me being informed. And it's going to go into the next council meeting where I'll be absent. So if this, if there are agenda items that are suddenly pulled away from council meetings for whatever reason, I think the council needs to be consulted, if anything, just for courtesy to the other council members if there is any issues. So right now, I won't be able to participate in something that I find very important, which is the Economic Development Committee's Strategic Plan Update.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm glad we have folks in the audience who are supportive of the wine industry, which means you should be at Locals Day. I wanted to restate it again. It's Sunday, March 25th. $30 for locals, $40 for non-locals. I think that this will be a great event, getting exposure for the wine industry, especially the folks who live in Lompoc who may not be as familiar with the industry as others. So please come out and support the local industry on Locals Day. And that kind of brings me to something else that I wanted to bring forward to council. And I wasn't sure in which way I should do this, but having Mr. Ostini come, I think has greatly increased the relationship, or improved rather, the communication and the relationship between the city and the chamber. I think it's done great things for us. There's one other organization, or rather, large district in town that I feel that there is a miss as far as communication is concerned, and that's the school district. So a lot of times when we're talking about economic development or things come up in the community, a lot of it is in regards to education, you know, in the school district and how to improve those kinds of things. And I didn't know, and again, this is very preliminary, and I wanted to throw it out there for council at some point to think about, is if we could come up with an idea of how to increase and improve communication between the city and the school district. Now, I understand we don't have a direct contractual relationship with the school district like we do with the chamber, but even still, it was an idea that I had thought about. And, you know, I could have waited till the next, um, idea session that we've been having.
Workshop.
Workshop. That was the word. Thank you. Jeez. Next workshop. But being unaware when that would be, I decided to bring it forward this evening. So my apologies that it's kind of out of turn. But it's just something that I'd been thinking about and a lot of citizens have approached me about. Thank you.
I'd be happy to contact the school district and see if they'd like to give us a, a monthly update or a quarterly at a minimum. Matter of fact, maybe you and I visited with them before on some subject. Maybe you and I could work on it again together. That's okay with the council? Everybody good with that? Okay. So Councilmember Costa and I will contact them. Councilmember Starbuck?
I would just ask Ken Ostini while he's here. He's on the school board, too.
[laughing]
I wanted to bring up something for our, for our Tap TV, our Tap TV lady in the back, Judy, wanted me to mention that the Dr. T Family Car Practice Relay for Life Team is having a Texas Holden Poker Tournament Saturday, March 24th, at the Veterans Building at 5:00. There's a buy-in, but there's prizes. And the second thing, I want to make sure the Chief Dabney gets this. Even though you're retiring, I'm going to take you out next year in the Pinewood Derby, Chief. I will not run from the police.
Councilmember Lingle? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report, I didn't bring my daytime with me, my calendar. So I, I was at several meetings, but the most significant one was on Thursday. I attended the Community Advisory Board at Vandenberg Air Force Base. And I just want to make it publicly known, everyone knows what an asset Vandenberg Air Force Base is to this community. But what many of you don't know is how involved they are in making sure that that entire base is cleaned up environmentally. They, they are going through that base basically inch by inch and reclaiming contaminated soil, filling, well, recovering munitions that were there since the Korean War. Hopefully, they're not still explosive, but they, they could very well be. This base, as long as I've been going to this meeting, it is amazing how they are so conscious of what it is to be a good neighbor. So I just want to publicly thank them. It's, it's always an eye opener when I go to these meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. I attended 15 meetings and events over the last two weeks, none of which were at city expense. There's two, I want to just take a moment and relay something. Number one, I had a conversation, you sparked my memory, with the, the project manager for SpaceX. And he said they are on track for November launch. He did stress that he was in charge of having the pad ready, not having the rocket ready to sit on the pad. However, that is their objective and they're on track for that. And he indicated that their schedule for beginning in November would be one launch every other month. Also, you know, at the same event, I spoke to the, the project manager for United Launch Alliance. And I think he said they have five on the books now for next year. So that's basically a launch a month, which is a huge, huge revenue stream for the local hotels and restaurants. The next one I want to talk about was the SB CAG, the Santa Barbara County Association of Government Meeting. And, you know, what we do a lot is look at transportation and it's not too exciting. But there were two things that I think were noteworthy at the meeting last Thursday. Number one was an update on the Highway 101 project. Number one, we're ahead of schedule. And number two, we're below costs. And what, because of those lower costs in the projects, it is enabling future phases and portions of future phases to be done sooner. The Chairman Gray and Vice, let's see, Vice Chairman from Goleeta and the Executive Director went to Washington chatting with them about getting more funds for the Highway 101 for Phase 4 and had a very positive reception. And then the other subject that took up a lot of our meeting was a growth forecast that was supplied by a consultant to SB CAG and some numbers that were supplied by the Governor's Office of Economic Forecasting. And it's not the right name, but that's what it was. And those numbers showed these pie in the sky growth numbers that we're supposed to start planning for that affect our arena housing allocations. And to a person, everyone there, North County, South County, mayor's supervisors went, no, this is all wrong. You know, it showed agriculture with basically no growth. And yet, you know, we know the wine industry is expanding here and in Santa Maria, land that's been cow pastures has been turned into strawberry farms. And over in the San Dionne's Valley, there's land that was formerly nothing, that's now growing vegetables. And so the, the discussion of all of us was, well, this is wrong. And so what the staff was sent out to do was get the Santa Barbara County Economic Forecast from the two universities that have already done it and come back with something that makes sense. Because if we buy these numbers, and the other thing that happened was, we got a set of numbers from the state. And then the SB CAG staff went to the state and said, hey, these are all wrong. And the state lowered those numbers 20 percent, their growth numbers 20 percent. And we're all going, well, you know, if, if your numbers were so good, why would you at the first round bring them down? And so that's ongoing. And I think there's unique agreement from all portions of the county that the numbers are in fact wrong. Okay. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I always seem to forget one thing. My apologies. I'd be amiss if I didn't mention that the Community Action Commission has some really exciting news. One of our programs, our Youth Corps program, was facing funding that was ending from the Workforce Investment Board and, or Workforce Investment Act, rather. And we were sort of scrambling to find programmatic funding because it was a huge program for the city of Lompoc. Friends of the Youth Corps meeting got started and there was a lot of citizens from the city of Lompoc, including some of our staff from the Police Department, who attended these meetings to support this program. And I'm happy to announce that we've signed a contract that will get us through to July with an organization to put these youth to work. They're at-risk youth, anywhere from, I believe, anywhere from 16 and 17 all the way up to 21. And so we're really excited to announce that this program's going to continue in the city of Lompoc as well as countywide. And I've really seen the impacts. And so what we're also doing is Champions Dinner. We honor three people countywide once a year. That's March 29th. And the Doulton Marriott at 6:00 PM. I know there's going to be some local citizens who will be there and hopefully some other folks can make it. And this year, the funding is going towards that Youth Corps program. So Community Action Commission does some great work. And we're really happy when we get some great news that will sustain a program that has such a large effect, especially for the city of Lompoc.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, we will, Lompoc City Council will adjourn to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM on April 3rd. See you all then.